Good afternoon. Welcome. This is the November 1st meeting of the National Capital Planning Commission. For all those in attendance, please note that today's meeting is being livestreamed on the ncpc.gov website. We do have a quorum, so we will call the meeting to order and we will proceed with the agenda that has been publicly advertised. Agenda item number one is the report of the chairman, and I don't really have anything of consequence to say. I'll say that we have a light agenda today, one pretty substantial item, but other than that, we have a fairly light agenda. Next month, however, I say to my fellow commissioners, we have a very heavy agenda. So, pack of lunch.
Jinx today, too.
Yeah. Agenda item number two is the report of the executive director, Mr. Acosta.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm pleased to announce that the American Planning Association, National Capital Chapter, presented a distinguished leadership award in planning for the Bannaker Park Pedestrian Improvements Project, which was also a key proposal in the Southwest Eco-District Plan. The partners included NCPC, the National Park Service, the district government, and Hoffman-Madison Waterfront Partnership. Many thanks to NCPC's Beth Miller and Megan Spiegel and our partners for the excellent work. I will also note today that you'll hear the proposed improvements to the adjacent 10th Street promenade in a informational presentation. We also say farewell to urban planner Nick Bonard, who will become the New Water Resources Protection and Mitigation Branch Chief at the District Department of Energy and Environment. We thank Nick for his many contributions to the agency over the last four years and wish him well in his new position. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Acosta. Any questions for Mr. Acosta? Agenda item number three is the legislative update and general counsel, Ms. Skylar.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing to report.
Excellent. On the consent calendar, we have only one item. It's item 4A, and it's the approval of comments on concept plans for the Arlington Ridge Park Comfort Station at the U.S. Marine Corps War Memorial, and it's brought to us by the National Park Service. Is there a motion on the consent calendar? It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the consent calendar? Hearing none? All in favor of the consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Thank you. The open session agenda item is agenda item number 5A, and it's to approve comments on the draft guidelines for small cell infrastructure as released by the District Department of Transportation. We heard about this technology earlier in the year, and staff, NCPC staff, has been working with DDOT and other stakeholders, including in the industry, to better understand this technology and how it may affect our public areas, especially those in the Monumental Core and along Constitution Avenue and elsewhere. So with that, we have Mr. Fliss. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. As mentioned, the District Department of Transportation has submitted the draft Small Cell Infrastructure Guidelines for your review and comment. DDOT is the lead agency and liaison with the cellular providers, and they have been working with NCPC and a number of other district and federal agencies to develop guidelines that will inform the placement of this infrastructure within the nation's capital. So with a growing demand for wireless technology across the country, cellular companies are working to relieve congestion on existing networks. These wireless providers, or also known as carriers, have begun deploying small cell infrastructure, which is a new, lower-powered antenna technology to reduce data traffic on the roof-mounted equipment in larger cell towers, which you might already be familiar with. Carriers can install single equipment for their individual use, while others can co-locate through hoteling. This new technology does require significant infrastructure that can affect the aesthetics and function of public streets and spaces. And you can, as you can see here on the screen, there are multiple applications for these, including attaching to existing streetlights, utility poles, or employing standalone pole Small cell antennas have a limited signal range, and each provider, as I mentioned, may be installing hundreds of antennas throughout the district to meet their independent coverage needs. We've heard that up to 2,700 facilities could be installed over the next five years. DDOT has entered into a master license agreement with several companies that are planning to deploy these facilities throughout the district. Regarding the pole design and attachments, each provider may have a unique antenna style and configuration. I'm showing you a couple of the different variations here on the screen. Small cell facilities are generally located on poles, which are about 30 to 35 feet in height, and this height is necessary to accommodate the connections and transmission along street corridors. For comparison purposes, and you can see here on the right side of the screen, Washington Globe Lights light poles range from 14 to 18 feet tall, and Twin 20s are, currently are tallest poles at about 22 feet of these types. And these are about 2/3 the height of the typical small cell pole. Antenna equipment, of course, is attached, and it's about 5 to 7 feet in height, and there is also other supporting equipment, electrical cabinets and such, that are also included. And so depending on the design and also the provider, the cabinets can be integrated into the pole base, attached to the middle of the pole, or installed as boxes near the pole base. They can also be located underground. So throughout today's presentation, you're going to hear me refer to really two general categories of installations. First, there are the new standalone poles, which are installed just for the cell, for small cell purposes. And then there are also attachments to existing poles, which are primarily going to be in the downtown and Monumental Core area to Cobra Head poles. So you can see here, there's a lot of potential variability and potential impacts to the So given that as a background, DDOT has been working with federal and district partners to prepare these design guidelines, which will guide the installation of small cell facilities. They generally describe the location, appearance, and other criteria that, criteria guidelines indicate that the preference is to attach to existing Cobra or utility poles first before installing new poles. In addition, facilities cannot be placed adjacent to federal properties. They can also cannot be placed adjacent to federal reservations. This is a provision that staff does support. And then finally, facilities cannot be placed within 20 feet of listed historic properties. These and some of the other provisions, which I'll mention throughout the presentation, play out in particular ways throughout, in terms of the installation throughout our A few other things to note. Small cell facilities are not allowed on Washington Globe or Twin 20 light poles, which are shown both here, and these are the typical light poles in much of the downtown area and around the National Mall. Staff does support this limitation, given their purposeful design, historic association, and also the presence of these fixtures throughout the Monumental Core. The draft guidelines also currently require cabinetry and other related equipment to be undergrounded in vaults within the LaFonte City and the Monumental Core. This requirement intends to eliminate the potential of visual and physical clutter associated with this equipment, which I've highlighted here. I've also highlighted, I'm sorry, I've also highlighted here some alternative approaches, which the carriers have advocated, which includes hanging the equipment off the pole or building it into larger, thicker pole bases. When I get into the staff analysis, we're going to look at what this might mean for the streetscape. So as the federal planning of the aesthetic and functional aspects of the public spaces that we experience every day. So given the setting, staff has prepared a study to understand how the guidelines might play out in the areas of greatest federal interest. And we focused on the area shown here around the National Mall, and those areas were the highest concentration of federal facilities, including museums, memorials, and open spaces. It also includes a number of important streets with critical views to the White House and U.S. Capitol. We've also expanded our study area a little bit further out to understand some of those transitions that might happen between downtown area and surrounding neighborhoods into this core area. We did a series of field visits. We walked the streets, and we also looked at where the small cell facilities could be placed per the guidelines. We also used GIS and other technology to map existing poles and identify where new standalone poles could go. So as I've stated, variations that are laid out in the guidelines. To help supplement our study, we've also used imagery from these streets, taken by staff, to see how the poles might look in real life. So again, here's that same location on F Street, looking west, with the Treasury Building in the distance. And this is a visualization showing how those poles might look when standing on the street. Again, you can see them here on both sides of the corridor, and there's actually another pole behind you on the street outside the view. The guidelines do call for the new poles to match with the existing infrastructure on the street. So through this, here you can see a standard block in downtown Washington, while other areas, which are more of the federal interest, do not have this same type of coverage. So now that you've seen a typical city block in the downtown area, we want to refocus on areas which NCPC has a greater interest, such as the Northwest Rectangle and the Federal Triangle, where you can see highlighted here have many fewer poles allowed, and therefore more limited coverage. Clearly, there are some unique circumstances about these areas that distinguish them from other parts of the city. So what were these conditions? Well, first, there is a high concentration of federal buildings, and in many, in many cases, there are federal properties on all sides of the street, which means there are no alternative sites for placing small cell facilities. Secondly, there are, as I've mentioned previously, a significant number of Washington Globe and Twin 20 light poles, which do not allow for small cell facilities. There are also relatively few Cobra and utility poles to attach to. In this area, as you know, there's also a lot of perimeter security, which defines the streetscape, and also street trees, which would limit placement opportunities. And these conditions, again, are clearly different than that of F Street, which I showed you earlier. This area also has the potential for unique impacts due to the concentration of historic and monumental buildings, the highly-used and highly-public spaces around these buildings, and also some of the important streets and views that are a critical component of the Monumental City, Monumental Core. So because of these conditions, we have gaps in coverage and placement, and also, based on what we've heard from the carriers, we understand that coverage needs vary from block to block and also depend on demand in the area. We've heard that downtown and the area around the National Mall are a priority for the providers. And further, in the event that additional coverage is needed in the areas, we decided to test an alternative scenario where the federal property restriction was eliminated, but we did preserve the restriction for NPS reservations. And so here in map three, you can see that scenario, where facilities would be allowed adjacent to federal properties. So here, what you're looking at are red dots for potential standalone poles, with red triangles indicating potential facilities on existing Cobra poles. And I've also left the blue dots from our previous analysis here, so you can see them all together. So in this scenario, you can see additional poles would be accommodated in the Federal Triangle, Northwest Rectangle, that were included in your EDR today, and highlight some of those key points. So starting here, this is an existing view of Constitution Avenue, looking west towards the front of the National Archives. And this is a visualization showing the addition of three new standalone poles in front of the building, again, highlighted in red. And here, I've switched to the more realistic view, where the pole colors match the existing street furnishings. So in this particular case, the scale of the Archives building does seem to make the 30-foot-plus pole seem less imposing, but you can see the people there on the sidewalk level give you some sense of scale and the fact that the poles are still quite large. You'll see in some of the upcoming views that the impact at the pedestrian level really appears to be more significant. In this particular case, you also have a classically symmetrical building with a prominent entrance and two flanking flagpoles on the site, and the small cell facilities add new poles in somewhat asymmetrical way with the initial variety. So again, you can see in this image, there are quite a few poles, and the potential for quite a bit of variation, and this is pretty inconsistent with the unified streetscapes we typically see in Washington. I'll also note, while we're on this view, that the draft guidelines do restrict placement of poles in medians. We do support this, because some of the medians do contribute to some of those important vistas that we're familiar with in LaFonte City. And so in this case, we don't feel that a 35-foot pole in the middle of this view would be appropriate. So this is a view from 12th Street, looking towards the EPA Building on your Federal Triangle Metro Station. In this area, there are two existing Cobra poles up in front of the building, and as I mentioned earlier, the guidelines recommend attaching to existing poles with Cobras first. And as I've mentioned earlier, in this study area, there are actually relatively few Cobra poles, but in this particular case, there were two. So we're showing you what that potentially could mean, and here again, highlighting those attachments to the existing poles corridor, as well as a defined entry highlighted there with those flags. So here's a rendering showing the addition of four new poles in this segment of the street. A fifth pole would actually be located further up north along the corridor. So you can see the new poles are interspersed with the existing poles, light poles, and they start to for the new infrastructure. We also recommend that DDOT work with CFA and NCPC to address this issue. So here again is that same streetscape, here just looking down the sidewalk. And here's a rendering with the new small cell poles inserted. Again, you can see it starts to fill in some of these gaps. Here you can see how the hanging cabinetry could be distracting, and then in the distance, you can see an alternative version with a larger base. As I've mentioned, we do support undergrounding this equipment, but we do note that the providers have expressed concern, significant concerns, about this from a cost and feasibility perspective. So here's a view along the north side of Constitution Avenue, looking east. This is near the Mellon Auditorium, which you might be familiar with. Again, you can see here the Twin 20 light poles, as well as some existing flagpoles. And then here again is a rendering showing three new standalone poles. So in this case, one of the poles is right in front of the Mellon entrance, which you'll see again in another rendering, and then there are several other poles that are located further down the street outside of this view. Again, you'll see how tall they are compared to pedestrians on the street here. And as I've mentioned, when viewed from a distance, particularly in the Monumental Core and these large federal buildings, the poles don't appear as intrusive, but at the pedestrian level, they are much more present. So again, here's that same area, just looking from across the street. Again, the Mellon Auditorium is here in the middle. And then this is a rendering showing, showing the installation of the new standalone poles, in particular this one located in front of the entrance. Again, what's interesting about these areas is that with some of these grand and monumental entrances, the areas are left open without trees. They're left open for, obviously for visibility, but also for pedestrian access. But because of this, they could be potentially attractive for small cell facilities, because you don't have the infrastructure and streetscape there currently. Again, we felt that this is an issue that would need to be addressed in the guidelines. And then finally, here's a existing view looking south along 8th Street with the National Archives in the distance, and this is taken from a point near E Street. And then here's a rendering showing the potential for, for new poles, as well as extruded bases and hanging cabinets, if undergrounding was not required. So you can, you can see here the size and scale of these features. Again, undergrounding would keep the cabinets out of the sidewalk space and preserve space for pedestrian movement. Interestingly, this is relatively consistent with the longstanding practice in Washington of hiding or diminishing this kind of utilitarian infrastructure. So in the recommendation, we do express support for undergrounding the cabinetry and other related equipment to the maximum extent possible. However, we do note that the providers have expressed concern about this from a cost and feasibility perspective. And so while the first part of my presentation is really focused on the planning and design aspects of the guideline, it is worth pointing out that network coverage is not really part of NCPC's purview, but is important for informing development of the guidelines, so that we can figure out how to balance coverage needs with urban design impacts. At this time, we don't have a full sense of the carrier's complete needs and facility placement, extending as to why there's no requirement for multiple providers to share infrastructure through hoteling, and whether this would occur if the number of poles were reduced. And then finally, consideration of a phased approach, where fewer poles are permitted at the, at the outset, but the numbers could be reassessed in the future. So as we've seen through our study and our testing, we found that the guidelines may lead to some gaps in coverage in those areas that the carriers have stated are higher priority. We've also learned that applying the guidelines to these areas without any changes could lead to a variety of other planning and design issues. And as, as I've said before, this is a unique area with unique characteristics, and so a one-size-fits-all approach may not work here, given the different results that we've seen. As such, we, staff does think a map for this area might be the right approach, focused on the areas of the greatest federal interest, which I've generally highlighted here. So if it's determined additional coverage is needed in this area, staff recommends that a detailed map providing specific locations for pole placement would be a way to address concerns, both from NCPC as well as for the carriers. To accomplish this, we're asking the commission to direct, direct staff to prepare such a map, taking into account the regulating criteria of the draft guidelines, coverage needs, and the desire to protect the nation's most important public spaces. Staff would bring such a map, map back to the commission in December, which would be provided to DDOT for consideration in the final guidelines. So in terms of next steps, DDOT is working to release an updated version of the guidelines relatively soon, at which time there'll be another review period. In the interim, there, we expect this, the guidelines to go back to the Commission of Fine Arts, as well as return to NCPC in December. All of these and any changes would go to the district's Public Space Committee for final review and potential approval in January. And again, this is a tentative schedule at this time. So as I conclude, I'd like to reiterate our appreciation for the work and coordination that DDOT has provided on this project, as well as the other district and federal agencies. And that, given my presentation has already gone through the findings and recommendations, I'm going to not go back through them all again, but they're here for discussion purposes. That concludes my presentations, presentation. We do have representatives from DDOT available for questions. I know we have several speakers, and some of the providers are also here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fliss, very much. We do have a number of folks who have signed up to speak, so let's get them first before we take the matter up among ourselves. First up is Tom Lupke. Tom is Executive Director of the U.S. Commission of Fine Arts. Welcome, Tom. Five minutes.
Thank you. Ready to go? Well, thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Tom Lupke. I'm, I serve as the Secretary of the Commission of Fine Arts. Thanks for the opportunity to provide these remarks. Established in 1910, the Commission of Fine Arts has worked closely with our partners in DC and federal government to guide the development of the city as a national symbol and to create beautiful, livable, and equitable city for all the district's workers and residents. In the past year, the CFA has seen two presentations on small cells, a general information presentation by the NCPC staff in July, as well as a more detailed presentation by DDOT in September about the draft guidelines. In both those meetings, the Commission of Fine Arts endorsed the programmatic approach to reviewing, to reviewing small cell installations using guidelines, and they provided many suggestions and recommendations for continuing that initiative. I should mention, too, that the old Georgetown Board of the Commission met today. We had a, they had some comments as well, so that will probably feed into the commission's review. The CFA recognizes the potential benefits of the improved 4G and 5G technologies. However, the CFA continues to express concern about the great impact that multiple new poles and installations would have in public space. In particular, they voiced concerns about the potential visual impacts of many thousands of installations, both on the Monumental Core and the residential areas around the district, especially on the size and appearance of the components that comprise these installations. This is probably the biggest issue that is, that the commission has identified. The commission has had a long history of guiding the design of the city's public infrastructure, particularly its iconic lampposts, in accommodating changing technology, of course, going from gas to electricity, and now we're facing new things in this, in this century. In the CFA's first decade, its chairman, Daniel Burnham, and vice chair Francis Millet collaborated to design large monumental lighting fixtures for important federal areas around Union Station and Pennsylvania Avenue. This was a simple, classically-fluted standard that was adopted for all electric lighting. In 1923, this standard design was elongated and elaborated into a system of seven single-post types. Perhaps the most impressive of these was called the Twin 20, designed by Lincoln Memorial architect and CFA member, Henry Bacon. Cities such as Los Angeles and New Orleans adapted this design for their own lighting systems. The Washington Globe fixture, an urn-shaped lantern with rippled glass, that was also developed at this time to establish a standard lamp enclosure. So these iconic lighting standards are still seen and specified throughout the city. The CFA was instrumental in the design of poles used to support more modern Cobra Head fixtures beginning in the 1950s, specifying a fluted tapering design similar to what is still used today. Most recently, the CFA worked with DDOT to devise a new lamppost typology for the city that combined the beauty of historic details with contemporary performance requirements, resulting in the decorative teardrop fixtures of top pennant poles seen on many corners throughout the city. CFA, in its review, has noted that these iconic historic fixture types were developed according to particular, in particular times with particular performance standards, and I should probably add aesthetic sensibilities, and they have affirmed that these fixtures are not suitable for the addition of small cell installations. In general, the CFA identified this fundamental inconsistency between the elegance and precision of contemporary cellular devices and the generally obtrusive infrastructure systems that are in, in public space that are required to support the cell devices. While they recognize the possible benefit of the technology, the CFA has also observed that the small cell antennas are essentially privately-operated public infrastructure, like electricity, natural gas, and sewers, and they should be regulated to control their impact on the public realm. So regarding the draft guidelines, the CFA has commented that these guidelines require further refinement to meet the standard goal of treating all areas of the city equitably in its cellular service and in its design. They've suggested further refinements to the, to all, to the allowable small cell, small cell installation matrix, with consideration of applying consistent standards across the whole city, perhaps by requiring underground equipment vaults in all locations and providing more nuanced criteria for regulating varying areas, such as the Shipstead-Luce Act jurisdiction. And I should add here that today, at the today's old Georgetown meeting, that there was a considerable concern and objection to inserting 31-foot-high poles in, in the public space of a very narrow right-of-way, that they felt that, that really this, these guidelines should be encouraging rooftop installations or alley installations, but that they were very concerned about that impact. So for the design of the installations themselves, the CFA has emphasized that the successful integration of this new technology in the public realm is really a design problem that requires a holistic design solution, and they've advised the development of a new typology for small cell installations, rather than allowing a discordant kit of parts of varying types of antennas, boxes, cabling, et cetera, to be attached haphazardly to existing or new poles. Developing a design would make a positive contribution to the city's streetscapes and could be achieved by directly engaging industrial designers, architects, and other professionals in the designs of the, the unified design of poles and equipment, perhaps by asking the other project sponsors to have a design competition. These installations could also serve as the location for new smart city technology and infrastructure moving into the future. So to conclude, in order to support this initiative, CFA's guidance is first to engage in a deliberate process to ensure that these installations are as appropriate as they deserve to be, given their very obvious presence within the public realm. Second, the CFA encourages that the DC government take the time necessary to develop these further design parameters for the installations, using expert advice from design professionals as part of the approved guidelines. Number three, the CFA requested the construction of full-scale mockups to evaluate details and overall impact of a completed proposed assembly. And I should again add, the OGB comment said maybe this is best done in phases, starting with a pilot program, which is something that was just mentioned a minute ago. So thank you again for the opportunity to present these comments of the CFA. We anticipated continued coordinated review of the guidelines for this major public project, and we look forward to developing a design solution that, that integrates the, this promising technology into the public realm. Sorry for running so long. It's an important issue for everybody.
It is. Thank you, Mr. Lupke, very much. I know we have someone from Verizon here who is here to answer questions. Do you have any remarks that you'd like to offer up at this time, or, or not? I'm not, I'm not pressuring you to, to speak if you're not ready, or if you're rather not. I'm not pressuring you to speak if you're not ready, or if you're rather not.
No pressure at all.
Yeah. So you're Owen Strummer?
I am.
Yes.
And I represent Verizon Wireless. So I'm here today just to talk about a couple of recommendations that were in the guidelines and the recommendations from NCPC, and explain some of the challenges to those recommendations. First, for vaults. Small cell equipment needs to be close to the antenna to prevent single loss, and locating the equipment at the base of the pole is the maximum distance in which anything beyond this should significantly affect the performance of the site. Ventilation is critical to the mitigation of the effects of heat and moisture for small cell equipment. Vaults will require fans, subpumps, and open grates in your sidewalks. This will require vaults to be a minimum size of four feet wide, nine feet long, and three feet deep. Placement of such large structures in the DC right-of-way and sidewalks is impractical. DC right-of-ways are already congested due to existing vaults, utilities, and trees. Open vent grates for intake and exhaust fans are going to be required, and they present concerns, as we believe. One, DDOT's 2017 Design Engineering Manual prohibits open grates in the sidewalks. Grates become obstructive, preventing airflow to the equipment. It also creates an opportunity for water infiltration during periods of heavy rain. Since grates are prohibited, air conditioning would be required, which would result in a larger vault size. Under this design, some type of ventilation is still required. A subpump would be required under a vault installation. We ought also need the ability to discharge water for the subpumps. There's also a concern that the discharge line would become clogged and affect the equipment in a negative way. Last but not least, OSHA. OSHA requires that adequate ventilation is provided to maintain safe oxygen levels and to avoid harmful buildup of combustible products and cases. And since there's no open grates or ventilation, there's a law against that in your sidewalks, we would not be able to meet those guidelines. Next, I'd like to talk about real quick, hoteling. Hoteling is not an option for Verizon because, one, each carrier has different coverage and capacity needs, because each carrier operates at a different frequency, uses different equipment, and has different network designs, and we all have a different customer base that we're trying to reach. Two, equipment space would increase by a factor equal to the number of carriers on a pole, since each carrier would require their own equipment. And lastly, a multi-carrier operator would limit each carrier's ability to adjust to future technology needs. And there were two points I'd like to point out. In the presentation, all the poles were 31 feet, okay? Not all the carriers require 31 feet at all times. We understand that in certain circumstances, the Georgetown area, that we would propose to hopefully have our antennas at that 20 to 22-foot height that would match up with the dual and single globes that are in that area. So not Verizon Wireless throughout the city is not proposing a 31-foot pole. It's going to be subject to the carrier's needs and what that area would require, including from an aesthetic standpoint. Any questions?
We'll come back to you. Let's...
Sure.
Don't run away.
I won't.
We have one more public commenter, then we'll come back.
Great. Sounds good.
So thank you, Mr. Strummer.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I believe we might have skipped over Ms. Purcell.
Oh, that's my fault. Yes, yes, yes. My apologies. Yes, we have Beth Purcell with the Committee of 100. You were second on the list. I apologize.
No, no problem.
Yep, welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Beth Purcell. I'm testifying on behalf of the Committee of 100 on the federal city. One takeaway from the public meetings that were held this fall, where residents participated, was a tremendous fear on the part of many residents, that there would be a proliferation of small cell poles, because DDOT's draft guidelines allow each of the four carriers to place a pole on that block, if that was the specs. That would result in the potential of four poles on some blocks. Also, and there's a way I'm going to come to very quickly, of mitigating this very serious problem. I just want to point out that the staff's report mentions that there could be a lot of poles on certain streets, certain key streets, such as Constitution Avenue, the potential of five new poles on 10th Street Northwest, and concerns about the variation in the appearance of these small cell installations, that it could look ad hoc and it could be disjointed. There is already in existence a means to mitigate this problem, which is called colocation or sometimes called hoteling. The important benefits of this are reducing clutter, helping to preserve view sheds, and reducing the risk to street trees. However, DDOT's draft design guidelines never mention colocation and do not require it in any way, or force carriers to explain why it's not feasible. Because technology advances rapidly, it is possible that even if colocation is not feasible today, it may become feasible in the future, and if it is, we believe the guidelines and the master licensing agreement should require it. DDOT's master license agreement has a potential term of 20 years. That's a long time. Technology could change a lot in that interim, and colocation should be mandated if possible, and it's important to plan now for that remedy. Several years ago, other cities faced this small cell issue earlier than it came to Washington. In Nashville, and I cited the ordinance in your materials, colocation is required where it is possible. And applicants who are applying for permits to install small cell must explore all colocation opportunities to locate their facilities on existing or alternative structures. Any carrier applying in Nashville to install small cell that does not suggest or propose colocation must provide a detailed justification to the City Planning Agency. That includes all alternatives that were considered by the carrier, identifying the radio frequency, so it's possible to tell whether there are in fact interferences. If no location is shown, they must establish a minimum effect on the view shed. They have to document other uses where it could be accommodated, et cetera. And now, for our city, Crown Castle will be colocating Sprint and T-Mobile. And though at public meetings, AT&amp;T and Verizon have stated that they will not collocate in Washington, they do colocate in other cities. So requiring a colocation where it is feasible, we believe, is consistent with the FCC's latest order on September 26. We urge the commission to recommend that the draft design guidelines be modified to define colocation and require it where it is technically feasible, unless carriers can justify separate installations. We also urge the commission to seek answers on two other issues. One is small cell backhaul, which is a transmission between the small cell and the mobile networks Apparently, some carriers are going to rely on fiber, but others are going to rely, we understand, on line of sight, which would be continuous contact between point A to point B to point C. Our concern with this is that maintaining a line of sight continuity may pose the same problems for street trees as Pepco's overhead wires do in parts of our city and also nearby in Maryland, and we have a photograph attached to the testimony. If it's necessary to maintain this line of sight, you can basically end up with a need to butcher the street trees so that the line of sight can be maintained. One other quick thing, the design guidelines mandate as a first priority that small cell be installed on wood poles in unnamed alleys. This requirement in the guidelines is extremely helpful, and it would help to limit the number of poles that would be pushed out onto the streets, creating all the issues that the staff outlined in their report. Carriers claim that the small cells are ineffective in these installations. We believe that this is a claim that needs to be thoroughly investigated because of the potential effect on pushing large numbers of small cells onto the streets with all the problems that have been identified. And thank you for considering our views.
Thank you, Ms. Purcell, very much. Next, we have Joanne Newhouse, representing the Penn Quarter Association.
Hi there. Thank you. My name is Joanne Newhouse. I'm the Executive Director and Officer of the Penn Quarter Neighborhood Association. I'm also a resident in this neighborhood, and I work here, and I've worked on downtown since 1968, so I'm sort of historic myself. But before I present my testimony, I want to pass along a few thoughts from Kingdon Gould III, who was out of town and asked me to speak on his behalf. Kingdon was one of the six founding members of Penn Quarter Neighborhood Association, which had its 30th anniversary this year. I can't believe it, but it has. Kingdon emailed me the following, and pretend I'm his voice. "You certainly have my support for your testimony. I would point out that we residents, property owners, and businesses are depending on you at NCPC, the Commission of Fine Arts, and the Washington DC government to require an acceptable solution to the sticky wicket. The current concept of multiple 30-foot poles or even 20-some-odd-foot poles on each block is unacceptable. The 5G companies are technology companies. I have no doubt that they can and will meet our requirements if we hold fast. We have been doing fine without 5G, and we can live without it until they get it right." There was a day when electrical power was distributed via above-grade poles and wires, but the electric utilities found a way to put their wires underground where they are both safer and less intrusive. Of course, before they were required to do this, they said it couldn't be done, and that even if it could, it would be too expensive. Fooey. We were not surprised by the cell companies taking the same stance, and we believe they too will come around and accept compromises. And it's really up to the government to require this. We were able to get the original cell service without the towers, and now I can get perfect cellular service four floors down in my garage. Where there is a will, there is a way, and I think it's up to the agencies to encourage strongly that will and that way. Now, I'm going to testify on behalf of the Penn Quarter Neighborhood Association. We have 21 board members, and support for this testimony was unanimous. Our board includes 11 property owners or managers, representatives from the city's arts community, leaders in the hospitality field, that's hotels and restaurants, a couple of marketing experts, and residents, which is pretty unique. Most organizations don't have quite this mix of members, and our board reflects our membership. I think all of us have been more than a bit appalled at the proposal that will do great harm to the public realm's aesthetic appeal, and that is currently the only proposal under consideration. That no other proposal was or is being considered is absurd. We think it is critical to examine other options than poles along sidewalks. Finding other solutions may not eliminate all the poles, but certainly can significantly reduce the number of poles needed. Three I was able to think of yesterday that I believe are worth looking into are placing the devices on the roofs of three- to five-story historic buildings. And I'm talking about our area, which is north of Pennsylvania. Basically, I understand that Pennsylvania Avenue is excluded, which I really thank you for because of my past work. But the area I'm talking about is the area basically bounded by 15th Street and the freeway, New York Avenue to Mount Vernon Square, and Mass Avenue east of Mount Vernon Square. We think it is critical to examine other options than poles alongside walks. Finding other solutions may not eliminate all the poles, but it certainly can significantly reduce the number of poles needed. Three I was able to think of yesterday that I believe are worth looking into are placing the devices on the roofs of three- to five-story historic buildings, which would be about the same height as the 30-foot poles, maybe a little higher, and placing them on signs on buildings like the signs for garages and storefronts, retailers, where you can't see them, or they're not noticeable. They just sort of blend in with those signs. And they don't destroy the vista either. They're not right on the edge of the sidewalk. They're against the buildings. And the third one, I was placing signs on buildings that have ledges or sills or something else where those boxes that are... I mean, you can't believe those designs. I mean, these are technology companies that give us, you know, these high-tech wonderful designs, sort of like Mies van der Rohe designing the Barcelona chair in 1928, and we get these awful designs, every single color, they are every single shape, and somehow they can't just go into a box that's uniform? It's unbelievable. I'm sorry. I just went aside from that. I would also investigate the possibility, and we're thinking that one of the reasons, and this is just hypothesis, that they want this public venue review, is that they don't have to go to individual property owners, as they did to put cell antennas up so we could operate our phones today, and they don't always follow up on that when someone builds a new building in time to keep their own customer. Some of us switch to different companies because of that. So I can understand their need, but what happens if we could get property owners together, and they would have like one group to negotiate with, with a single purpose, which is keeping these devices off the street, out of the public realm? And then they would have one negotiator, so that it would be like two people instead of five on this side and 15 on this other side going individually. So the idea is to facilitate negotiations to keep them off the street, and that hasn't been explored. No one has come and said, hey, are you willing to do this? And it's something that I think should be considered. And let me get back to my testimony. Investigate the possibility of a joint negotiation with a mediator working to establish a fair deal for everyone. The building owners would work as one team, and the cell companies would work as another team. There would be one moderator representing both parties so that a fair deal would result for everyone. And why am I suggesting this? Because I am guessing that going from door to door is a crapshoot, and a time-consuming one at that, that the cell companies are trying to avoid. It can also get very expensive if the facility, the property owner or manager, demands a certain kind of payment, but by having a single negotiation for all the buildings needed in each neighborhood, it's likely to make this option more appealing to the cellphone operators, and I think it's something worth looking into. I know it's not your domain, but I just have to present these kinds of options. I've seen or heard of alleys raised twice as an option. It was one I considered before hearing that they won't work there. I don't know if they will or not. I haven't heard the experts speak. Maybe the gentleman from Verizon can address that. There are some alleys, not in our neighborhood, I think of Dupont Circle behind the Cosmos Club and Blackden Alley, where you have a lot of space and you have lower buildings. And I'm trying to wind up. The suggested alternatives deserve to be looked at before you make any decisions. And as Kingdon said, where there is a bit of pressure from the government to modify proposals to gain public support, there is a way to move through the review process. In closing, I just want to thank the staff here and the Commission of Fine Arts for the work that they have done, and we hope that the city will follow suit and be as vigorous in their review and in their decision-making as these two agencies have been, and that there'll be a... For those who don't know, there's going to be a roundtable that the council is holding. We don't know if the council has to approve anything either. So thank you very much, and good luck, and please look at... I'm sure you will, but try to think beyond what you're having to look at right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Newhouse, very much. That ends the public comment. I will note that at your desk, you have additional letters from others on this... I will note that at your desk, you have additional letters from others on this issue that have been very insightful and helpful. So with that, we'll return the discussion to the commission members. Mr. Cash.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. So I'll start off by saying I could probably go on and on about a lot of the design elements here that a lot of folks have expressed concerns about, and I'm sure that a lot of my colleagues are chomping at the bit to talk about. But because this is a planning body, I actually thought I'd ask a couple of planning questions. So is there a representative from DDOT through Mr. Fliss who -- I have a couple of questions just about some of the formulation here? And I have a few questions, but there is a point to them, and I promise. So first question, did DDOT, OCTO, or any other government agency investigate whether it'd be cost-effective to provide municipally wireless broadband connectivity on any of these poles?
So before I answer that question, let me just introduce myself for the record as well as for -- so we can continue this conversation. My name is Catherine Ruse. I serve as the P3 manager, as well as the streetlight manager at DDOT, and have taken the lead on helping to work with the NCPC, as well as CFA staff, historic preservation and OP staff in drafting these guidelines. So to answer your question, an FCC ruling essentially made that cost prohibitive. There was a recent FCC ruling that put a ceiling on the fee. There had been a couple other cities in America that had started public-private partnerships with companies such as Verizon to integrate smart technology, small cell being one of them, into their infrastructure. Those cities are now being forced to renegotiate their contracts, essentially because the FCC has put such a low ceiling fee on that, that there's no source of revenue to be able to pay for these things.
Okay, so I just wanted to read. I actually opened up the district elements of the comprehensive plan today, and policy Infrastructure 4.1.2 encourages us to try and find ways to expand things like DCNet into when we're creating these policies. So that's the first question. The next one, did the draft guidelines consider policies to mitigate involuntary public exposure to potential adverse effects, considering these devices will emit electromagnetic fields?
So again, that is not something that the district department or the district government in general has jurisdiction over. As you know, radio waves and that technology is governed by the FCC, and they are the jurisdiction that has oversight over the health concerns and potentially anything that might be included there. So we do not have jurisdiction over that. The FCC does.
I'll just read a little bit again from the district elements' policy environmental, this time from the environmental element, saying that any of these facilities should be located only when and where necessary based on service needs and should be designed using methods to mitigate involuntary public exposure to adverse effects. So I mean, the fact that it wasn't addressed in that at all feels surprising. And just a couple more. Why didn't -- why wasn't co-location even mentioned in the design guidelines, whether or not they say it's technically feasible? I mean, the guidelines didn't even try to encourage co-location?
So by co-location, you mean the hoteling?
Hoteling, yeah.
Yes. So the guidelines very much allow that. They don't prohibit that at all, and as part of our considerations, when we've been getting information from the various providers, that has been taken into consideration in terms of the various equipment sizes, et cetera, that are needed. The MLA certainly allows hoteling as well. As it's mentioned, we cannot force them into hoteling. The only way that it naturally forces anyone into hoteling is that the restrictions within the guidelines prohibit the overall number of locations that are allowed and the frequency, and thus, once spots are taken by certain providers, that will be their only option. So that's the way. But we cannot force them into hoteling in any ways because of the technology requirements that they have. And again, because of the FCC rulings that have come down, it has taken home rule away from municipalities and states across the country, and we have very few, very little flexibility in terms of what we can and cannot dictate when it comes to small cell technology from the health concerns that you mentioned to the fees that we are allowed to charge to overall prohibiting this type of technology.
Well, so I mean, I understand that there, with the FCC guidelines, there's a lot of preemption that's going on, and we can't require a lot of things, but I think that there's a lot of room to encourage these type of things. And in my experience, at least here, with planning efforts, when it comes to the comp plan, I think there's a lot of ways to nudge things to try and get them to comply with what we've decided are our local goals when it comes to these planning efforts. So I mean, co-location is one of our comp plan goals. Protecting the environment with electromagnetic fields are our goals, and I think that the word hotel was appeared once in the draft guidelines. So I think that not even having anything in there to encourage, I think that we're really kind of -- I mean, I know that NCPC, we're here to look at the federal elements, but I mean, I think that there's just a lot of inconsistencies with at least our district elements, and it's concerning. And part of me is wondering why this is really kind of moving through the district government so quickly, and I wonder if part of that's because we're actually considering the district elements right now. We have the framework before us. I wouldn't be surprised if, given all the public attention on this over the next year, when I guess OP is going to be sending down the rest of the elements, that we might not address some of this stuff because a lot of people have a lot of concern. So I just kind of have a feel like we're moving these things along very quickly. As was mentioned, there's a council hearing on November 19th on this. I think that DDOT could hopefully learn a lot. I know there's been a lot of community concerns about this, but I don't think that there's been input by the council yet. I wouldn't be surprised if there's legislation or some kind of attempt to address a lot of the community concerns that they feel haven't been addressed. So while I know that we're commenting on draft guidelines, I think that there's a lot of work to go into the draft still, and I'm afraid that if we approve these draft guidelines today, that they, just like we saw on the slide, you're anticipating coming back in a month and five days with the final guidelines, and that's in between a council hearing where there's going to be a lot more information, and I'm just not comfortable at this point letting NCPC move anything forward because with my experience and the council's experience with DDOT and these agencies, I just feel like this train's taken off, and if we don't take some time to pump the brakes and get a little more public input now, I'm just afraid that we're going to lose a lot of our opportunity. So I'll let other commissioners ask more technical questions and all that, but I think at some point, when it's appropriate, I'm going to ask that we move off consideration of the approval of these draft comments to a later commission date. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cash. Ms. Wright?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. I would refer you to the Wall Street Journal of September 13th, which describes Denver's push for hoteling. So if Denver, as a test case, can get there, why is it that we can't?
So actually, Denver's struggling with that right now. Denver, we talked explicitly to the gentleman that had put together their design guidelines. They put design guidelines out, and almost immediately, they have had to go back and revise them. I believe it might not be current NCPC staff, but prior NCPC staff participated in those conversations, and Denver very readily recognized that the design guidelines that they put out were not sufficient in terms of addressing the needs of the technology, and they are already having to change them in terms of what they are. I will also say that Denver's technology that they were incorporating was, from my understanding of talking to their lead at the Denver government, was 4G. And from what I understand, and again, I'm not the expert on it, is that the 5G makes it even more problematic to do hoteling. But I will say that they have already had to start adjusting their own guidelines because they're no longer sufficient.
So I don't even know where to begin, but there -- I don't understand why, first of all, we're not hearing -- you're not bringing with you somebody from the FCC. The last time we looked at this stuff, I asked a lot of questions about health and safety, got no answers. And to just say it's not our jurisdiction, I don't think that suffices really, because I get it, and I'm very sympathetic. I know this has landed on you like Dorothy's house. But the problem is that you're -- we're being asked to say yes with incomplete information. There's a historic preservation waiver. It's that, oh, that's the FCC. There's a health and safety waiver. That's the FCC. But why aren't -- why hasn't DDOT -- why isn't DDOT curious enough to find out and be able to answer these questions? I don't understand why. We're just being told to take the carrier's word for it, and with all due respect, there's so much money involved in this enterprise that I would be a little bit hesitant -- wait a minute -- to necessarily say, oh, well, you know, the carriers say we can't hotel. Well, the carriers have roof -- I know it's not the same. We have 4G antennas on many of our rooftops, and I understand that the technology is different. What I don't understand is why we are being hustled to the extent that it feels slightly -- no, more than slightly, very uncomfortable. Public realm appearance issues notwithstanding, which is what we're here for, but there's so many unanswered questions, and we're just told, well, that's FCC. And I'm sorry, that does not constitute an acceptable response from DDOT. It's doing its due diligence on the citizens of the district's behalf.
So the -- I feel that we have done our due diligence, and that has included--
Can you answer those questions, then?
If you allow me to delineate how we've done our due diligence. So we have had legal analysis of the FCC rulings to determine what we are allowed to do and what we are not allowed to do, to determine essentially jurisdiction of what we are allowed to control and what we are not allowed to control, given federal regulations. We are a district body. We have a government body, just as other government bodies across America. We have to abide by federal regulations and federal laws. And so our due diligence has included what are the things that we are allowed to include in these guidelines? What are we allowed to dictate? And that's our -- those are the things that we are addressing in here. And so I'm not legally -- I can't answer your questions. I think that they're fair questions, and as, you know, NCPC having its own federal jurisdiction would very much invite you to reach out to the FCC and ask them to come to the next meeting. But our due diligence has gone to what are we allowed to include within our guidelines? And whether we like it or not, those, that is the boundary that has been set for us. And so those are the items that we are addressing.
So you're -- are you suggesting that DDOT is not allowed to press for hoteling? Is that what you're saying?
So no, we very much are pressing for hoteling in the way of we are overall limiting the frequency and the total number. And if NCPC has the recommendation that we put explicit language in to say hoteling is a preference, we are very much willing to consider that as an amendment. I think that what we're not allowed to do is, we do not have the legal jurisdiction to mandate hoteling, and that's the difference. So if the request is for us to put in language saying that this is a preference, I think that's very much something that we're willing to consider. I will note, though, that during the working groups, one of the downsides of hoteling is that that equipment is much larger, and it has an even bigger visual impact. So instead of having two-and-a-half-foot antennas, you have the potential to have six- or seven-foot antennas. And so that was something that was very thoroughly discussed with CFA, with NCPC, with historic preservation, and the Office of Planning, to say, this is all a balancing act. There is no perfect solution. So what is the best balancing act that we can provide in terms of guidelines that we've included? And again, we're open to that suggestion of additional language to encourage hoteling, but I think that that's as far as we're allowed to go.
I have a couple of questions. Has there been -- we know that it could be as many as 2,700 of these facilities on new or existing poles. Has there been an analysis in terms of before and after propagation about how many existing poles you think you might be able to use in order to achieve the desired result? That's question A. Question B, related, is as the industry has done this in other cities, Denver, wherever else, has there been enough experience to develop a rule of thumb that we're -- the trend is we're being able to see that we can use typically about 30% of our -- I make that up, 30% we're able to use existing facilities, and we're having to instruct the other two-thirds?
So I will address the question of the poles. So hopefully, you've been given a copy, a full copy, of the draft guidelines. You will notice within the draft guidelines, there is a map. The map shows all of the possible existing DDOT poles that are currently allowed within the guidelines that can be attached to. So hopefully, that addresses your first question. And there's also a table on the map that enumerates the total number of each pole type. As to your second question, we very much did reach out to other cities, not only within the United States, but capital cities across the globe. We found that in reaching out, that the United States is ahead of their colleagues in other countries in terms of installing this, and so there aren't guidelines in other capital cities, unfortunately. We did talk to other cities such as Denver, Lincoln, Nebraska, San Francisco, LA, Dublin, Ohio. There are numerous other cities that we looked at to say, what are their design guidelines? How are they being installed? And we have taken their experience and feedback and incorporated that in. So the fact that Denver, very soon after we had a first call with them, they came back and indicated, hey, FYI, we wanted to let you know, we've actually already had to start changing these guidelines because they don't work. So that was very helpful feedback in terms of what we included and what we didn't. So we very much did take a best practices approach in terms of what are other cities doing to incorporate that. I will say that the unique nature of DC has -- is incorporated within this that makes us different than other cities because, as compared to other cities, we have a lot more historic infrastructure. Our lights, light poles are much more articulated and designed as Mr. Lukey from CFA so importantly noted to you earlier. And we've incorporated that. So we are not allowing installations to go on our very historic Twin 20s, as well as Washington Globes, because of the historic nature. A lot of other cities in our conversations, they don't have that same issue that we have. And so we are a bit unique, just in the way that NCPC is unique and CFA is unique to only DC. And so that gives us a little bit of a challenging factor in further incorporation.
So reference is my last question. Reference is made to Nashville. Have you talked to Nashville?
I don't know if we talked to Nashville.
My question was going to be, I think testimony was, that their guidelines require co-location where it's possible. And I was just curious, how much are they finding it possible?
That I would have to go back and double-check. I don't know.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw, Mr. --
So I just want to thank you for the work that you've been doing, and Office of Planning has been working very closely with DDOT and our partners on this. But I think one thing that's come up with my design staff, and this is, you know, and I want to thank you for your work too, but we keep on focusing on the poles and don't define the planning and design context in which the poles exist, right? So I think we mentioned, we don't have trees in front of our museums for this reason. Are we -- like, so I just, one of the concerns, and we shared this in a letter to DDOT, was how are we defining the design context for the district? Why are there six-foot sidewalks? Why are there brick? And so I just think that in not understanding the public space intentionality, then it's hard to -- it's hard to really comment on the poles themselves, or the vaults themselves, or the infrastructure themselves. And so I think that we've committed to continue to work with you guys to lay out that design context stronger, and I think that would be helpful even in some of the reports we're thinking about. It's just a lot more of the why are -- I know we're doing that right now with the -- that was two presentations ago, right, with the assessments of our public space and the different areas. There's a clear intentionality about why we did things, and then what does this do to either enhance, disrupt, or alter? That, I think, is an appropriate test in terms of planning and design outside of the poles and pole spacing themselves. So, you know, if I would ask, if there's not that additional analysis in the report to sort of have the staff come back to better tie in the public realm guidelines that were done earlier, and then the impact that way. So I would ask, can hold off them? So, I would ask, can hold off them?
I'm sorry. Mr. May.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
Okay. So, I have a few comments kind of all over the place, but I'll try to be as coherent as possible. So, first, I will say that I've had prior experience with approving cellular infrastructure. And as a result of that, I understand how local jurisdictions and even organization, agencies like this can be handcuffed by the actions of the FCC. So, it's not news to me that they don't let you get into the issue of the health impacts of electromagnetic radiation. Doesn't surprise me, disturbs me, doesn't necessarily surprise me. And there are aspects about FCC hands in this that are concerned. But just so I understand, everything that's within the guidelines that you're suggesting right now is consistent with the current guidance from FCC? In other words, you're not proposing things that they would say no to?
No, we have gone and applied further restrictions to things. So, one example is, the current guidelines say that the maximum height of any installation is, I believe, 31 feet or 10%, whichever is greater of adjacent poles, whereas FCC guidelines allow that to go up to 51 feet. So, there are areas, not surprisingly, the latest ruling in September basically used the word reasonable. And so, we've been trying to approach this, that's a wiggle, a wiggle term. So, we've been trying to approach this in a thoughtful manner and by imposing guidelines that we think are reasonable. You know, Matt and I--
They say reasonable height restrictions--
Reasonable height restrictions--
But up to 51 feet?
So, that is the FCC regulation, is that these installations can go up to 51 feet or, I believe, 10% of the adjacent pole, whichever is greater. We've reduced that 20 feet to 31 feet.
Okay, but you feel you're on sound legal basis to say that?
We do.
Okay, so there's wiggle room within the FCC's guidance?
For things like that.
You believe?
Yes.
Okay. I keep hearing concurrence from our council. So, and in terms of NCPC's recommendations, we have the same level of confidence in the comments that we were making on the guidelines. So, in other words, you know, excluding them from certain areas, this is something that we, you know, it's a reasonable recommendation. And if they adopted it, it would pass muster with the FCC?
Well, we are advisory, this commission is advisory only, so--
I understand that. But I mean, I know, I know we're not going to get in legal trouble. That's not what I'm asking.
Okay.
But if they adopt this recommendation, is it something that's permissible within the FCC's limitations?
We think it's defensible, if ever challenged, that we have reasons to uphold the reasonableness of which we have made decisions that we have included within the guidelines.
So, and the area of exclusion is something that's common, I mean, that's something that they've proposed and NCPC has supported. But there are other things where we were pushing a little further, is that right?
So, we tested the guidelines as drafted, and when we found those areas where there were going to be gaps, that is why we tested this alternative scenario, to see how that could be addressed. So, that is what staff's analysis shows. And if that is a route to be taken, then there are other considerations that would need to be addressed in the guidelines.
Okay. So, I want to go back to Mr. Cash's suggestion that we not take an action today, is that right? Yeah. But as I understand it, our action is simply to approve the comments that would go to D-DOT and their rulemaking process. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
You're not approving the guidelines.
Right. And we don't get to approve the guidelines.
Right.
Right. And I've already forgotten the schedule, and it wasn't in our electronic version. Hopefully, you can send that to us separately. But the finalization of those guidelines will occur sometime after the public space hearing in December? No, January.
Tentatively, public space would review it in January.
In January. So, I don't, I'm not familiar with public space's rulemaking process or D-DOT's rulemaking process. But you're out for a public review of a draft regulation now? Is that the way we interpret this?
So, part of why we have the goal to publish an updated draft sometime within the next couple of weeks is because the Public Space Committee requires 30 business days notification. When 30 business days typically is about 45 calendar days, when you get into issues such as Thanksgiving and the holidays, that extends it. And so, that's why we are anticipating a January special meeting of the Public Space Committee to have a second hearing and potential adoption of the guidelines. I will say that all of this is extremely tentative.
Sure. But in theory, if everything goes well, however you define that, it would mean that in January, they would be adopted by the Public Space Committee.
Correct.
Unless they're somehow preempted by council action or something like that. Okay. All right. I just want to understand that sort of what we're doing and what the legal basis of these things are. So, I do have a few general comments about small cell technology and how that fits with Park Service's interests. First of all, you know, in the long term, we would like to see some version of this technology deployed on the mall and in other, at other NPS reservations. We have been talking about something like this for several years, but we've been reluctant to move on anything because of the technology limitations and the impact on public space that it would result. But we do have a real need to reduce the number of, well, to increase coverage and to reduce the number of cell-on-wheel, cell-on-wheels that have to go in when we do various events, and those happen every year, and very big ones every four years. And I think I would say we agree with the general aspiration of a, for a typology that is holistic and elegant. And we certainly agree with the letters from the Commission of Fine Arts and, of course, Secretary Lubke's testimony in that regard. We also are strongly supportive of hoteling or neutral host providers, which is, you know, we've had discussions with neutral hosts before, and that's all we've talked about when it comes to deploying something like this in the mall. But again, it hasn't advanced that far. I can understand the challenges with undergrounding. I think sometimes those challenges are exaggerated. But I'm not an engineer. I just, you know, make it my life work, life's work to pick on engineers when I can. And I say this with a true love for engineers because my father is an engineer and my sons are engineers. So, the, I would also note that there's like something of a disconnect between this and the inter-agency streetscape manual, which is also under, going under, or is being revised right now. And I think some better integration between small cell guidelines and this would be helpful. The last thing is, I actually would like, if we could, to bring the Verizon representative back up. So, question I have for you is, you know, the examples of the technology that we've seen have been, they're not something that fit very well with the streetscape of Washington, right? None of the, those proposed bits of infrastructure worked very well. Either the separate box or the poles or the integrated box, and certainly not the poles with the box up in the air. So, I'm curious, who designs this stuff?
The wireless technology engineers, RF engineers, design it.
Right.
They do that based off of physics.
And they do it without any sense of design?
That is not completely true.
No, I, well, we can dispute that for a really long time. I've worked with engineers many, many times.
Sure.
And the projects that I've worked with where, like, the engineer is the lead, it takes a really long time to get to an acceptable solution.
Sure.
And I think that you should take the advice of Secretary Lubke and the Commission of Fine Arts to heart and actually put this task before people who know how to design stuff, not people who know how to design cellular infrastructure, people who know how to design things that look good on the street. Because this stuff looks like junk, and it will always look like junk. And it looks like junk on the top of buildings right now. And, you know, we put up with that because we can't see it, but we should not put up with that on the street.
Sure.
And I think that you should take that to heart. I think you should, you know, bring in, I mean, they compare this to the technology that brings us these elegant phones that we all have in our pocket. That's an excellent comparison, you know? Bring in the team from Apple and have them design your cellphone technology on the street. I mean, that's, you know, that may be hard to do, but that's the concept. And I think that that's something that should be done, and it should be done across vendors so that it is not something that, I mean, there should be a standard, you know, I'm not even putting aside the question of whether you can live with your technology in the same pole, the technology that's deployed on the streets should not be, you know, here's Verizon's pole, and here's T-Mobile's pole, and here's AT&amp;T's pole, right? It should be more like the Washington Globe and the Twin 20.
Sure. First of all, I agree with you. We do have conversations with the intended manufacturers and equipment makers, and they do have to fully understand that we're bringing this down to street level. So, those conversations are ongoing. So, we're trying to, we're trying to make those improvements. I did want to--
Can I interrupt just there? I mean, I've seen the product of these, of such manufacturers and their designers, and it's also not up to snuff. I think that you need to step it up further from there. But I appreciate the fact that, you know, there are actually people with some design sensibility somewhere in the chain in which these things are designed.
Couldn't it be made a goal, a shared goal of all the carriers, to make hoteling possible and to make the vaulting possible? Because I think what you're going to hear from us and everyone else who's got a pair of eyes, that this is just, what you're planning is unacceptable. We spend countless hours, I mean, and years of time trying to design the, the necessary additions to the public realm, and I'm thinking, of course, of perimeter security, to make it something, I mean, it's, we get that it's necessary, but it doesn't, it's not necessarily ugly. And this stuff is, there's no other way to describe it. And then, when you add that, there's so much of it, it's going to completely change the character of the streetscape. And in terms of federal interest, I mean, I've been trying to talk about this issue a little bit because many of the streetscapes that have been analyzed in this presentation to such negative effect is, belong to GSA. So, I would, I would like to associate GSA with the Park Service's comments because, you know, we're going to be stuck with this stuff, and we've taken great care over many decades to preserve these view sheds and twist ourselves into pretzels trying to hide the underbelly of what, of all the stuff that we need to do, whether, that's utilitarian. And I don't think it's too much to ask of the carriers to do that too, and to make it a goal, not just kind of say, well, we can't make this work. I don't, I don't believe that. I don't believe that you can't make work the vaulting. I think it's going to cost a lot, and therefore, you don't want to make it work. Is that possibly an explanation?
It would cost a lot.
Yeah.
But the fact is, there would be huge structures in your sidewalks.
Or in our building yard.
Yeah.
Because--
Or in a building.
In the case, for example, of the 1,500-foot block that, down 14th and 15th Street alongside the Department of Commerce, you've got two choices, sidewalk or building yard. We could talk about it if it was underground, if you would agree to explore it as a real possibility to eliminate some of this stuff. I mean, there's, the better design option for what we do have to look at, and then there's being more open and flexible to accommodate some pretty unique streetscapes that have been, a ton of money, of federal money has been spent to, A, create and B, preserve.
Sure. Can I just point out a couple of things? So, currently, the D-DOT guidelines on pages 12 and 13 only contemplate two designs. If we were, if these were to pass, the carriers would have to work within these two designs. No ifs, ands, or buts about it. The only thing that we're asking, at least Verizon Wireless is asking, is the ability to not vault, because we do believe that that, we're not going to have the ability to do that, and add a base cabinet. We all have to operate in those two, two design guidelines. So, that's one thing I'd like to point out. Second thing I'd like to point out is, these guidelines are very restrictive, okay? I know Matt did a great job of showing you what it possibly could look like, but he showed you streets with bike racks, with trees, with existing streetlights, okay? Guidelines on 10, 14, and 15 are going to restrict huge amounts of areas in which we're not going to be able to locate, just plain and simple, okay? We can't be on the dual globes. We can't be within 15 feet of trees. We can't be within a certain radius of a building, bike shares, all kinds of things. So, the proliferation throughout the city, it's important that we get the numbers that we need to serve the city, but I think the, I do think the guidelines have done a nice job of trying to balance the aesthetic needs of the community, the neighborhoods, and what the, and what the carriers need. So, I just wanted everyone to keep that in mind.
You know, I appreciate that. I don't know that this never changes my perspective--
Sure.
--on the design of the infrastructure that we're talking about. Again, you know, go back and read what Tom Lubke testified to, and the history of the development of similar infrastructure in the past. And I think there's a worthwhile lesson in that. And I think that if you came up with a, you know, a beautiful and slender design cellular, whatever you want to call it, small cell post, and found a better way to handle the equipment that goes with it, you know, you could be a hero and not just somebody that comes here and gets, you know, beat up by random commissioners. We, you know, we're, I mean, we really are on your side. I mean, at least from my perspective, I think we are. I want to see the technology happen. We want to see it available to the citizens of the district and to the visitors and to Park Service visitors. And we want it to be successful, but we also want it to be something that, you know, when you walk down the street, you basically don't notice. And that this is, you know, as invisible as possible, or, you know, and the way to make it invisible is to integrate it well. And that doesn't mean, I mean, if you could fit it all within an existing Washington Globe, that'd be great, you know? You could put them wherever there's a Washington Globe. But we know that the technology doesn't lend itself to that at this point. Maybe at some point in the future it would, and that would be a great thing. But we want to have something that's equivalent to that. If we can't have that, something that's equivalent to it. And I think that that will make your path forward a lot easier. And a lot of these restrictions that you see about, you know, the distances from things and the frequency and so on, could get a lot less restrictive, and your installations could get easier than they are now. I do have one other technological question.
Sure.
You were saying before that there has to be a proximity between the pole and the equipment. So, why is that?
So, information travels from your phone through the antenna, down the lines, to what we call the remote radio head, which is kind of like the brains of the operation. And then, it goes back to fiber to, you know, the general public system. There's a lot of line loss between the antenna and the, you know, the remote radio head. And the shorter that, the shorter that distance, the more performance that you're going to get out of that site, the more users, the more data.
So, that's a little different from what I had been told when we were researching neutral host providers for this kind of coverage on the mall. And maybe it's because it's, it was 4G technology instead of 5G.
Possibly.
But we-- But we were told at the time that the, the equipment associated with it, a lot of that could actually be quite distance, distant. In other words, it could be, you know, when you connect it by fiber, it isn't gonna matter very much if it's five hundred feet away in a, in a building or on a rooftop or something like that. Is that not the case here? You have to have a, a little widget in a box, you know, within five feet of the pole in order to make this whole thing work? Because that just seems, um, like not the best engineering. I don't know.
It's not, again, it's not a matter of engineering. It's, it's, it's physics, it's, it's math, it's how-
No, but I mean, engineering is how you take the physics and you make it into a physical object.
Correct. We just haven't gotten there yet to, you know, be able to explain it. At least for our technology, okay? So it's just, you know, we have that line loss, uh, the, the energy's lost in that line and the, the site just does not perform.
Are you aware of other providers that have better technology?
Uh, I do-
Or, or in that, in that regard? I'm like, of course you have the best technology.
Well, it's, it's quite true. Uh, I'm sure the other carriers do have some similar types of challenges, but I'm just gonna speak for Verizon Wireless.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Cash had a follow-up and then Mr. Gallus.
Yeah, just a quick follow-up, just because the legal issues come up a couple of times. And, uh, so can I ask, D-Dot, you mentioned a couple of times that you've gotten legal advice that there's only so far we can go with the FCC. Is that legal advice from your agency general counsel under the auspices of the mayor's office of legal counsel? Or is that the independently elected attorney general that's giving you that advice? Or who are you consulting with?
We have gotten a legal sufficiency or a legal analysis memo from our, uh, D-Dot general counsel office.
Okay. Um, 'cause I, just very quickly, I, I, you mentioned in one of your responses to me that, that we are limited in our home rule because of the FCC's actions. And home rule is kind of a trigger word to a lot of people that work for DC because we're actually limited in our home rule by Congress. And I just think that it's really incumbent on the agencies, especially with something like this, to take a very expansive view of our legal options. Five years ago, the district council sued the mayor at the time, saying that we have budget autonomy and that we passed this law. It went to federal court, we actually won, whether Congress recognized or not, we have a, a court order on our hands. So I just really encourage you, maybe talk to the attorney general, see if we can push this boundary because we have some experience pushing those boundaries.
So I will say, um, I believe that, uh, a member of the Attorney General's office did reach out before the FCC ruling to ask us, hey, what is this small cell stuff? Can you update us? What do you guys think about it? We gave them briefing on it. And, uh, I am not aware of if anyone from the Attorney General's office went to that FCC meeting to testify, which would be their decision.
Right. Well, and I just mentioned that because ultimately I think that, that it's the attorney general that would be defending us in court, possibly if we went to, if we actually got sued by the FCC. So I would just, I'll just end there, saying I, I really encourage you to take an expansive view of our power and not feel like we're limited to what the FCC might say no to later on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, I think, um, I checked the letterhead of our agenda today. It says National Capital Planning Commission. The challenge, I think, and the frustration that we're having here today is that, uh, this seems to represent very little planning. That's the frustration of a group who's been tasked for us of trying to plan to, and to keep, um, sort of maintain the quality of, of the federal triangle and the historic district that we're here to oversee. And so, you know, I, I, I keep thinking about, it's sort of like the devil you don't know is worse than the devil you don't know. There's so much, it seems that we don't know what D-Dot isn't able to ask even. And, uh, the sort of, you know, I'm thinking about when we first designed computer rooms that were, you were describing the air conditioning and all the things that we had to do when we had rooms that were bigger than this to now do what we do with, with these cellphones, right? So part of the challenge here is, I think, you, this body doesn't seem to be convinced that, um, this technology's ready for primetime yet. That it seems to be on a course ahead of itself. When you described the need to have some pumps and air conditioning and all of these things, it really is describing a technology that doesn't wanna go there. There are a lot of hurdles. I agree with those. I understand that those are realistic, if that's what we have to do with the current knowledge and technology. But I, I am worried that as our roles as commissioners, we're being asked to plan something that we don't know nearly enough about yet. And I don't, I don't, I, I sympathize with D-Dot in the same vein, frankly. You know, I also wanna kind of echo some of the comments made about, um, how carefully we work on this, this staff and, and this commission to curate our designs, um, so that we can create elegance and beauty and maintain that in a, in a very dear and cherished way. And, um, again, um, I, I don't think a blanket approval of a set of guidelines that don't really respond to the areas that we seem to be, uh, here to guard don't seem adequate. And I have some very specific questions I'd like to ask. So Matt, maybe, could you go to map two first? Your map two. This is the one with all the red dot, the blue dots, right? So, as I understand map two, this was to sort of indicate what is possible with, uh, just by applying the draft guidelines.
That is correct.
That's right.
And, and we did take into account those things that are in the streetscape, so.
Right. So I, my question for the Verizon representative, if you had this, does this work? I, I don't know enough about the technology to say, if you, if you had poles on every one of those blue dots or triangles, does it cover, does it give coverage for, uh, the people in the green area? Who are gonna be walking up and down the mall and in the museums and all that stuff?
So I'd have to investigate the locations. And just to, uh, give you a little background, it's all dependent on user, on the users' and capacity in the area. So some areas are gonna require more small cells, some areas are gonna require less. It's also dependent on the carrier's different technologies, also what other infrastructure is currently in the market, including the macro sites. So it all works as one network, uh, but different technologies on different frequencies. Uh, so to answer that specifically, I can't.
Okay.
Uh, I, I would say that, you know, you know, in the beginning, we are looking to, you know, put something into every other block. Might not happen the first year, but eventually we are looking to, uh, make sure that we serve the capacity needs of the end user.
I see. So, um, that would be Verizon's need every other block. We don't know, do we know about the other, and I don't mean to ask you unfairly, but is that similar maybe?
So I'm, again, I'm not gonna speak about the other carriers. Uh, so Verizon's need could be every block, it could be every three blocks. You know, it's just, it's also dependent on how the guidelines shake out.
All right. So this, um, Matt, this is based on, go ahead.
I'm, I'm sorry, I just wanted to point out that in the executive director's recommendation, one of the things that we're requesting is that composite map. Because I think it will help answer the question that you're asking. I, I know we've had discussions with Verizon and, um, I think, again, we have a sense. Um, as you said, there's high demand areas and lower demand areas, but to have that in a composite form is, it would be important. And that's in the EDR today.
Agreed. I was just trying to understand, what am I looking at now?
Yeah.
Because we have to vote, we have to sort of vote on the EDR today and it helps to, and I agree basically with most of the recommendations in the EDR. A couple of quick questions, but, um, and then your map three, which has the, now the red dot, here we go. So this, as I understand it, is, um, who, whose federal, whose, um, guidelines are, are represented in the red?
So this is applying the same guidelines. The only change is that restriction against federal, when it's adjacent to federal properties. We're not looking at poles on federal properties, it's the ones that are next to.
Right.
So the guidelines today say no poles next to federal properties. The challenge, and this is from a coverage perspective, that our test has identified, is that you would end up with gaps. And it's unusual to this area because you have a lot of federal properties on all sides of the street. And so you end up with no location for facility. So that's, these are if you took away that one restriction.
I see. If you took it away. Got it. Okay. And I, I do wanna, uh, I do wanna compliment you all on, and I think maybe our representative from Verizon may not compliment you as much as I am trying to. But on the graphic, kind of help us to understand, you know, the, kind of where pole, pole placement would be. Because we started to look at buildings, um, where, you know, we've got dueling, we've got the beautiful flagpoles and then sort of, which have been carefully curated in, in connection with their placement relative to these historic buildings, these prominently, nationally prominent buildings. And, uh, and then the sort of ad hoc, uh, version of what the guidelines might allow. I understand that, you know, fifteen feet from a tree and this and that. But what I, what I'm, I'm really confused about, um, what the needs would be versus what the guidelines would allow. Because if the need is of every other block, but, uh, and so can you satisfy the need with all the constraints that are currently in the guidelines?
In the long run, probably not.
So what, what happens when you don't? So does the service drop? Is that what happens if I, if I'm walking or driving through that area and there's no, does, we just lose service? Is that what's gonna happen?
You're gonna have capacity problems, especially in high user areas, correct. Now, you know, the goal is to have, uh, hopefully the macro network and the existing infrastructure that is, you know, fifty feet and, and higher to help with that. But there will come a day when, um, user demand for data is so intense, not just from the user, the handheld user, but from people who use all kinds of applications, government, uh, agencies and whatever, that the, the, the network will require additional capacity and additional sites.
Okay.
If, if there is no current site there.
Okay. I have a couple of comments about the EDR itself. So page three of the EDR, let's see, this would be, let me get to it. This is under bottom of page three. So this is the one that says, notes, uh, notes the draft guidelines restrict. That's the word I wanna focus on, the placement of small cell facilities adjacent to federal properties and national park service reservations. So I don't know what, I, I think of restrict as not the same as, uh, prevent. Is it restrict or is it prevent?
They cannot be placed there.
Okay, well, I'd kinda like to see the word prevent, just, but that's, uh, we can talk about that.
Can I point one thing out?
Sure.
If you look on page ten of the guidelines, uh, it says, "Small cell infrastructure shall not be located within twenty feet of the front or side boundaries of a DC landmark, national historic landmark, federal properties, or a property individually listed in the National Register of Historic Places."
But that's different than restrict or prevent, right?
I'm just saying what's in the guidelines does say do not. So that's pretty-
Right. Twenty feet. That's, this comment is about restrict the placement adjacent to federal properties and national park service reservations.
There are two provisions. One, again, is regarding federal reservations within the LaFonte Plan. That's, that states that, um, this applies to all areas except for those sidewalks adjacent to federal reservations. So we can certainly adjust the language in the EDR if that makes you more comfortable. For the federal, um, federal properties, um, we have, in our reading of this, interpreted that they cannot be located next to federal properties.
So they're not the twenty feet, it's-
Not the twenty feet. Because in most cases, the twenty feet takes you out anyway. So that's, that's our interpretation. I mean, we're, we'll work with D-Dot in terms of what the exact language is.
Right.
Obviously, there's some-
So-
What does adjacent mean? What does adjacent mean?
It's, it's the sidewalks that are next to a federal property. So you're on, on the sidewalk and curb adjacent to a federal building. That makes sense.
S- s- sorry, can I-
No. Sure. Go ahead.
So that means, so-
That's the afternoon.
So adjacent-
It's on the block.
Right. So, so back to the Department of Commerce. Then, I mean, you've got five, five or six showing on the Fifteenth Street side. Where would they go if not on the sidewalk, right?
Yep.
Yeah. So you can see why I'm in a mood about this. Because by default, it's saying, oh, well, then, GSA, we're gonna be looking to you to bury this junk in your building yards. And what does that mean? Does that mean, do, so, so if, 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 if you have a federal partner, is this a partnership? Or is this a, you're gonna do it the way we tell you to? That's a question, not a rhetorical one.
We, uh, we are a tenant of GSA and federal properties.
Yes, I know. We have plenty of your equipment on our rooftops already.
Correct.
I'm, I'm very familiar with the whole enterprise. So my question is, so we work with you on rooftop antennae-
Correct.
-for view shed analysis, we do the RF analysis, we do, you know, we, we think about how it's attached to our historic buildings. And you work with us to minimize disruption to the skyline, protect the integrity of the historic fabric, et cetera.
Correct.
Is, so this is why I'm a little, I'm particularly concerned about the way this is shaping up. Because it doesn't sound like we're talking about a collaborative enterprise on small cell technology versus our rooftop program, which is, I would say, fairly collaborative. You are responsive to our analysis and you adjust your equipment accordingly. So, of course, I, I wonder, why would not, that not be the case if, for example, in the case of the Department of Commerce, you will ultimately be looking to occupy our building yards?
We're not, you know, again, we, the, the vaulting location or the vaulting locations is not something that we are contemplating. Uh, we do, we are trying to be a partner, um, you know, and design these, these sites as slimline as possible.
As what?
As slimline as possible. Uh, we do have, you know, we do meet what's in these guidelines right now.
Okay, but you're not answering my question, which is, would it, if, in the case of a federal installation, would the process, uh, would the design process be a collaborative one or a dictatorial one?
Uh, on GSA buildings, it's always been collaborative.
Okay.
In federal properties.
Does that same spirit of collaboration extend to 5G small cell technology?
It does. In the, in the case of the macro sites, we have ways to stealth sites, okay? You've got all kinds of, of things that the industry's able to do, put up screens, uh, you know, blend them in perfectly. The challenge here is everything is down at the street level and it's much harder to, to hide those.
I got, I got that. But, so if, if hypothetically, we were to say to you, well, we just can't, we just can't picture five, however slimly designed, poles in our building yard. And therefore, we would ask that you have another go at the design, would that be a fruitless conversation?
It's never a fruitless conversation. We're constantly trying to redesign sites. So we're looking to have the guidelines as is move forward so we can begin to deploy some sites within the District of Columbia. And as technology evolves, uh, as, uh, of, as different needs evolve, we're always more than welcome to continue to have discussions to improve not only the network,
I did, I did, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
You granted it to me.
I'm used to it, and I did, and I always will. So, you know, I wanna go back to my notion of the devil you don't know is worse than the devil you don't know. And there was some, some of the written testimony that was given talked about the concern about line of sight in this technology and how critical, and that's why I was asking about these maps, these dots, because if you don't have line of sight, what happens? And so, but the concern was about trees and so forth in a city that is known for its greenery, known for its beautiful tree canopy, and, and the heat island effect that it helps to minimize along with other environmental contributions. I guess I'm trying to understand how all of this, you know, this collaboration, how all of this happens, as the, if the guidelines give a green light to the providers that come in and basically do what they want with these trees to meet the line of sight, or the alternative is its coverage has dropped. I'm just trying to understand how that gets balanced in the collaborative consensus building discussion that might occur.
I'll let her give you the legal.
Yeah, if I might, in terms of the guidelines, the guidelines are explicit that you are not allowed to touch a tree or negatively impact a tree. It even goes so far as to say is, hey, if we've just taken a tree out because it died for some reason, you can't go put a pole there because we might potentially wanna go put a tree back there at some point. So it is extremely restrictive. We will by no means be allowing any tree trimming to accommodate for any quote unquote line of sight that might be needed for this. I will say that every single application, whether it abides by the guidelines or not, will be reviewed by our urban forestry division, and they love their trees, as I'm sure you all know, and they by no means will be allowing any sort of trimming. I will also note that to touch any street tree within the District of Columbia requires you to have a permit from our urban forestry division via DDOT as the permitting agency. So we have very much, I think, addressed that concern. I think it's a very valid concern, and I'm very glad that you brought that up to allow us to clarify that further, that by no means will we allow trees to be negatively impacted, because that is one of the greatest assets that we have.
Mm-hmm, agree. Okay, thank you, I'm almost done. The, I have just another question about the, the EDR a little bit. On page five of the EDR, the, this is the one under building entrances and architecture. And I don't know, this, again, I, I try to read every word to try and understand it, but it talks about, finds that above-grade cabinetry and other related equipment would unnecessarily distract from the views. Do we mean detract or do we mean distract?
I think both are applicable. But actually, I think detract probably a bit stronger. There is a purposeful streetscape, or a sufficient effect in the streetscape. These are, would be out, I think that's the intention.
My, then, thank you. My last comment then would be that I do compliment the work that you've done and the staff working with city agencies to get to this point. I think that there is an absolute need, there was discussion about approval of any, you know, tree removal or anything by city agencies. And I think the concern is that, how much does the FCC prevent those kinds of things from happening, whether it's the trees, whether it's decisions about placement, and the opportunity to actually design not only the fixtures, the way Commissioner May was talking about, which I absolutely endorse, but also the placement of, of those designs, and the careful kind of curation that occurs, that has made this city the beautiful city it is. And I, I think my reluctance is that we don't wanna give over the power to still weigh in on those decisions in design, in planning, because we might vote to accept these guidelines, which would, you know, I'm not sure how much it's taking our, our control and, and power away.
Sure, so just to reiterate, the commission is considering comments that will be transmitted back to DDOT. Obviously, this process is ongoing, they're gonna be looking at doing a revised draft for further discussion, so I think it would be helpful from staff's perspective to have your comments. You are not approving guidelines, so I just wanna reiterate that for our purposes, we are gonna be, continue to have discussions with DDOT and others, and so I think your, your direction through the EDR is, is important, so.
Mr. Dixon?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you. First of all, I think we're all eager to see this technology go forward, I think that's, but I think we gotta be careful that we bring it in in a proper manner, and I think that's got all of our concerns, which I share with most of the speakers. I do have a question, in the, do we speak to the hoteling? How strong are we with language in our...
We actually do have language, it's on page five. It's the first request, we basically say we want a better understanding as to why there's no requirement for hoteling in the guidelines. We've heard some of that language, I think it'd be helpful we can get that information. I think we've also heard from you that, from some commissioners, that there's an interest in maybe proposing that they add more language, so if that's the case, then I think we would like, like to hear that from the commission as well.
Well, I think that we, I'm interested in saying we would encourage it, rather than that we wanna study it, wanna know more about it.
Sure.
Because I think, and I, on that point, other vendors are able to do hoteling. Do they have better technology than Verizon? Is that why they can hotel, or, or is Verizon's technology so different that they can't accommodate hoteling?
All carriers have different technology.
I understand that.
And they use it in different ways. So it's dependent on their manufacturer, what spectrum they use, and what their general capacity needs are in that area.
I think providing this technology is so critical in so many ways, I wish you guys could get together among yourselves and see if we can't find ways, this hoteling, some way to, to get together rather than place lots of poles and things in our community. And I'm more, I'm also concerned, which is a council matter, and a council issue, I'm sure, how this all, once we make the things we're talking about hopefully have some effect, how is it gonna spin off in the community? When you begin to, do you, do you end up having the, what's the collaboration with GSA? Was that collaborative? I, I wonder when you put those boxes in front of my house, is there gonna be any collaboration with me in trying to make sure you don't put it on my plants or my, I mean, I just had a situation just recently where Pepco put a guideline in my yard, and then told me when I complained about it, that they have rights to go everywhere up to my porch. I didn't know that. I mean, so why are you doing, and I hope I don't have a box in my yard saying you can, I think that, I'm concerned about that part of it. Once we unleash this within the area we're concerned about, what's gonna happen in, in the community with these same kinds of concerns, or we just really nearly put things down? I, so I just think the technology, more than anything else bothers me. I think we, we saw things come from computer ROMs to the brick, you know, the big brick cell phones, and now we got things that we can hardly find, and they're so small in our pockets. And it didn't take long, I'm sure that was economic driven, market driven, and I wish we could get those same pressures on developing this technology, because the result is very critical. We send spaceships to the, to, out in orbit with technology that I'm sure does some similar transmissions that we can't capture. I just don't think there's enough, I wish I knew what was in those boxes, and I, there was a time I would have a feel for that better, but those boxes need to be opened up and looked at and see what parts, can we move from a big hard drive to a small, you know, chip that can carry lots of storage on it? I mean, what's, what's going on in that box that can't be reduced and miniaturized in some way? So I hope, I'm hoping for the most, but I wish you all could get together. I really, I can't understand why one vendor says no, like you all did on the subways, when Verizon was the only person providing service on the subway, and now we can get other service down there where you can get some, so I mean, I guess it's who's got the most muscle, I, I don't know what's happening here, but I don't, I'm not happy with that vendors have these different standards that they can apply to us. I wish you could get past it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon, Mr. Griffin.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just adding on to Mr. Dixon's comments, the clunkiness nature of the design, I would tend to agree, reminds me of my first cell phone, which was a small backpack that I carried around. But how does that technology then progress? How does it actually come to generation to generation without being utilized? And I think that's what we're looking at now, is the infancy of our first thoughts of how this small cell, and if we don't deploy it though, do we get the next generation and do we get the next iteration? I had a quick question, wondered if there was any exploration, or was there any prohibition for additional uses of these poles as they are integrated into the communities and as they become better designed or more integrated? It's interesting that the Director of Planning talks about planning these things. Well, are we doing that kind of holistic piece, especially around the national core signage and directional aspects and information? That whole technology is changing. Are these going to be the center of which that could revolve around and therefore be a lot more integrated into it? Can I pull up my scooter and charge it and then move on from these poles?
Down the mall.
I mean, I think that's an interesting point. I'll defer to DDOT in terms of, you know, what's allowed and their, their agreements. I know the focus right now is on small cell, but I think that's interesting in terms of the holistic design approach.
So before you answer, because I, I somewhat anticipate that kind of answer, that we're, we're focused on small cell, it was the same comment that was made when we had another informational on this, is, is this gonna be able to integrate bearing power lines as we have poles all across in neighborhoods and communities that are still exposed? Are those gonna go under as part of the infrastructure that we're integrating this? But I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, so I think you bring up a very good point about what potential future technologies this allows for. I think one of the important things that hasn't been noted yet is that part of this small cell infrastructure installation includes the potential for OCTO to install wireless access points in the district as well. And so they, we have an agreement, and it's dictated in the MLA, that as part of it, we basically, we being the District of Columbia, get to piggyback on these installations. So the providers send OCTO their list to say, hey, here's where we would like to go. OCTO compares that with their wish list of where would we like to expand wireless access for residents, businesses, people walking about, visitors to the District of Columbia. And so I do think that that's an important point, to note that that is included as a potential, and as these poles get installed, there's future potential, as OCTO's budget allows, to continue to expand its wireless access network that all of us benefit from. So I do think that, I also think from, from DDOT's perspective, this is something where the potential to have future technologies that help us, such as autonomous vehicles, this is all dependent upon small cell technology and the ability to get signals. And so there are advancements in all of our various other government agencies as well that have the potential, and this is a starting point for us to be able to get there, because you can't have autonomous vehicles if you don't have this at the base. So while not a, pun intended, driving force behind this, it, it is something that will allow us to continue that separate conversation going along.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Chair recognizes Mr. Cash for purposes of a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to move to postpone our consideration of this EDR or a revised version of the EDR to January 10th, and that revised EDR, I guess, could have any revisions that come out of reading the room here or other things, but I would move to postpone the consideration of this agenda item to the January 10th meeting.
Second. It's been a motion and a second, discussion on the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not in favor of postponing this. I mean, we are providing feedback to DDOT on regulations that are in process right now, and if we don't provide this to them officially now, then we will have missed an opportunity during this 30-day review period. And so, I mean, granted, we may be getting ahead of council and other actions, but that doesn't mean that we couldn't take this up again and provide new comments in 30 days or on January 10th. So I think these comments are worth sending over right now.
Ms. Wright?
So, so if, so can you go back to the schedule? Does, if we don't, if we don't opine now, do we in fact lose the opportunity altogether?
I, I wouldn't say we lose it altogether, we're just, I mean, there's this window when the, when DDOT is accepting comments, correct?
Correct.
I, I will say, as Matt has mentioned previously, NCPC's purview is to comment on these guidelines, and it's been an inclusive process thus far, and so we would very much like to get this feedback so that we can incorporate the comments that you have into the guidelines moving forward. We have a timeline, obviously, there's lots of pressure for us to, to get these done. We are also very cognizant of the need to have a public process and to gather this input. So I think the more input and feedback that we can get, that we can incorporate, the better off that these are gonna be. I think waiting until January makes it very hard for us to continue our productive conversations with your staff in terms of incorporating official feedback in, in what you would like to see.
So at the, at the Public Space Committee review of final guidelines, that's really it, right? I mean, they're, the public, so does the Public Space Committee have final jurisdiction for the district?
They, they will adopt the guidelines, yes.
I, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna clarify that. That is where they will consider adopting the final guidelines. I do not sit on the Public Space Committee, I cannot, they're a separate jurisdictional body in which they make their own decisions. But the timeline that we have set up is that that would be the date at which they consider a final set of guidelines. They could very much well say, no, we need you to go back and make more revisions, or they could choose to adopt them.
So, and you, you've said this several times, what is the pressure to get this done? What, where's that coming from and what's the reason that's being given that we're looking at? The first time we saw this was when?
July.
July? It's now November, so, so that, that's roughly a six-month period to do, to look at guidelines that will have, I think, arguably a measurable impact on streetscapes throughout the city. So again, I just, what's the rush? Who, where's the pressure coming from?
So I, I think the, the providers are obviously putting a lot of pressure. We have been, you know, working with NCPC, I think they realize the, the pressures as well that exist.
But, but why is, why, why, why do the carriers, why do they, why are they calling the shots on the timeline? I mean, I, I...
I would argue that they're not, I would argue...
But you just said that they're, they're the source of the pressure.
Right, and, and I would say that if I asked Owen to come back up here, he would very much say that they wanted this done five months ago, and they, if anything, that we have been slowing things down. And so again, this is a balance. We have feedback, the Public Space Committee, if you would like to pull up the record for the Public Space Committee, there were several testimonies on the record saying that they thought this was taking too long, and so there's a balance of...
But I, I understand that, but why is, why are, why are profit-making enterprises being afforded preeminence in a decision-making process that affects the public realm with capital P? I don't get that.
I would say that they're not...
I mean, I wanna weigh 120 pounds, and I don't get what I want.
Right.
Right? I mean, everybody has a wish list.
Right, and I would say that they very much has, they've said they're not getting everything that they want, and again, this is a balancing act. DDOT is trying to balance the needs of all of our customers. We have private businesses that are our customers, we have residents that are our customers, we have working partners...
But they're not applying pressure on you, are they? I, I mean, you just said the pressure's coming from the carriers. There has to be another source of pressure, right?
That's all I can say, is that this is, we're, we're trying to balance... That's all I can say, is that this is, we're trying to balance the needs of everyone. We think that we have put together a thoughtful process in terms of making sure that there was numerous outreach. I think that's why we'd like to, I very much anticipate coming and seeing you in a month, in December, for another iteration of conversation. And I think that's why it would be useful to be able to have the official comments that we can then incorporate so that in December, we can continue this conversation yet again and hopefully make progress on that.
Mr. Dixon speaking to the motion.
Oh, yes, I was speaking in favor of the motion. I just think this is sort of an artificial deadline we set. I mean, if we did act in January, we wouldn't stop anything from happening. And I think there's been enough discussion, our comments on the record in terms of being recorded. And you know, I think there's some ideas where we're heading. And you can take that back and the vendors can take it back and they can come to us the next time, maybe solving, addressing some of the questions we've raised informally at this point, at this meeting. So I don't, I don't see where, you know, it's just a formality or procedure, which I like procedure, but that we get it to you today and not in January. But you got the message today. I mean, you saw issues, you saw concerns. And the fact that it's formalized doesn't really change where we stand at this point in time. Unless you may come back, you may come back and have some new technology for us. So we ain't got a surprise. They just-
I'm not a miracle worker, but it actually does matter for the following reasons, is, as I stated previously, the Public Space Committee has the final say on this. They are a jurisdictional body. They have a public record. They do not consider things. They do not consider informal commentary from me taking back that, I can't come represent all of you to say this. So there has to be some sort of, that is a way for me to formally put on the public record with the Public Space Committee to say-
I understand how that works. Also understand when you understand where we're heading. Most of us are in it. Thank you.
Mr. Shaw?
So as a, as a planning director and having OP is on the Public Space Committee and staffs the Public Space Committee, I think it would be helpful to have comments as this is still deliberation. And so I think the action of not providing comments, delaying comments, actually gives a little bit less, ammunition's the word I was going to say, and I'll just say it, you know, as our staff and other jurisdictions are continuing to provide comments and revise these. So having these official comments on the record allow, gives us a little bit more meat to work with, our staffs to work with on this. I would suggest, though, still that just as an attachment to the, to the, to the comments, that you do also just put our public space requirements or just, once again, reference or attach the open space requirements from the federal element of the plan, just once again, to ground the work. We're still trying to make sure our staff is grounding their recommendations in existing public space regulations and the urban design chapter. Just that those reference materials provide a little bit more context or meat that could be helpful.
Mr. Gallus, final comments on the motion and then hopefully we'll vote.
Yes. I'm sort of in support of the EDR moving forward because of what the Director is asking us to comment on, which is to request that DDOT do the three things in the, in the three bullets at the top of Page Five. You know, that a composite map of all desired locations, an understanding as to where, there is no requirement for providers and consideration of a phased approach. These are things we, I'm searching for more information. I think the EDR is asking for that information and we need that information to have meaningful further deliberation on this going forward. So, thank you.
So the motion before us is to, moved and seconded, is to delay the EDR until January 10th. All in favor of that, raise your hand. One, two, two. All opposed, just for good measure. Motion fails. Is there a motion on the EDR?
Mr. Chairman, before there's a motion, I was just going to, I was just wondering whether we wanted to beef up the comments a little bit to address some of the concerns that we heard today. So encouraging hoteling, you know, making reference to other planning documents. I mean, and that's not something that I would suggest we could do on the fly, but I think that, you know, we might go on to the information presentations and then come back to this with some further suggestions from staff about how to beef it up. Oh, we already have something done. Wow, that's fast.
I do try to listen as we go through. Certainly insofar as the hotel-
Several strategies. I mean, for me, the vaulting is the biggest issue because those things are going to be like, you know, little mini trunks along the street. And I, I think we need to address that forcefully because I understand that it's expensive, but again, if you amortize what the federal government has spent on these streetscapes over time, it's kind of a pittance to ask that they spend the money to preserve them. And I'm, yeah, never mind. Just, I think we need to put some emphasis there, too. So on the hoteling, right now, it asks for an understanding as to why there is no requirement for hoteling. And I think, I think DDOT's already said, well, they're not allowed to require that. So some other language, yes, encouraging, about encouragement would be good, but I don't want to isolate that as the only strategy for reducing the visibility of all this junk.
Where was it proposed, Julia?
Page Five, Bullet Two.
Okay.
Right, well, that, my, my suggestion is, is that that's a section of the recommendations that's about requesting more information, but that you would like a standalone recommendation regarding hoteling and potentially a standalone recommendation to encourage, similarly encourage undergrounding of equipment.
As a phrase- As umbrella language about reduction of the visibility of the equipment, and then you could have a bulleted list of the examples of what we're talking about?
Can I also offer that one of the reasons that we suggested also looking at a map was because that could potentially be reduction in number of facilities? I mean, we're seeing, you know, several on every street and the question aligned with the coverage information will be helpful is like, well, actually, do you need this many poles in some of these areas? So I think that's also a strategy that staff is, would like to look at as well.
And that doesn't apply for the Monumental Core, but Ms. Newhouse's suggestion about rooftops of townhouses and the like would be worth pushing for consideration because they're, the distance from the users is manageable?
I mean, I would tend to think that there could be just a, you know, a single overarching comment about encouraging methods of reducing the presence of the infrastructure on the street, such as hoteling, vaults, putting stuff on the rooftops, et cetera. All those things.
And then a second piece about improving the design of what we do have to have.
Absolutely.
So regarding that, we do have language which supports the CFA's previous comments and we also have a request that DDOT work with CFA, NCPC to develop that unified design typology. Is that sufficient? That was the intention.
What page is that?
Page Six. It's on Page Six.
So do you have lan-
My seat, okay, yeah.
I think it's probably okay.
So, Ms. Costa, do you have language now? Do you need to work on it a little bit?
Well, don't forget my two little words.
Detract.
Detract, then.
What was the other one?
Restrict. What does restrict mean?
Prohibit, I think that's the suggestion.
Yeah.
Prevent. Okay, so, let's see. So in regards to Commissioner Wright's comments, recommend that DDOT encourage strategies to reduce the visual impact and presence of infrastructure on the streets, such as equipment undergrounding? We have, so the other one on hoteling, so this would be a second one?
Rooptops.
And rooftops and-
Just.
Mm-hmm. So that would be two. And then we would amend on Page Five, under cabinetry, where it says, the first line, unnecessarily distract, we would replace that with detract. And on Page Three, on the very bottom one, where it says, notes that draft guidelines restrict the placement, that you would prefer prevent.
Prevent.
Yes. So at your pleasure, we can do them as a group or we can do all-
Any objection to doing these as a block? Is there a motion on the amendments as a group? It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on the amendments? All in favor of the amendments, as you've heard them, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Okay. Is there a motion on the EDR as amended?
Mr. Chairman, can I have one more final comment on the EDR as amended? It's a little bit processed, but I really want to encourage DDOT. I mean, part of the reason that I was hoping that we could delay this was because some of these questions I thought could be worked out. And I didn't think from a process perspective, there's any reason DDOT couldn't pull it back and push it back forward. I lost on that motion. But I really encourage DDOT to look at these comments and all the other comments you're going to get as part of the council deliberation and all that, because what I don't want to happen is be here on December 6th and to approve these final guidelines in the 30-day review period that we have, because you're telling us that if we don't do it by January, then our, our thoughts won't be taken into perspective. Public Space Committee, by the way, is, no one knows who's actually on there. I challenge you to find that on DDOT's website. It's just this group out there. But I really want to make sure that you're going to take these comments and other comments into account, because I don't want to be here on December 6th with pretty much the same concerns being expressed and us told that we have two weeks to, we only have this window to provide our comments. So while I lost on, I really hope that you'll prove me wrong and that we will get all of these concerns addressed.
Mr. Chairman?
Sorry, I just have one minor legal question. I, what's the actual reference to prohibition on federal property? Is it just about federal buildings and federal reservations? Or is it all federal property?
Federal reservations is a separate provision.
Yeah.
And then there's the language.
It's just that Helen Wright's-
It says, it's, yeah, it's in Section Six that talks about federal properties. So they're actually two separate-
Okay, so one of the things, and I'm, you know, I don't know if this is an issue or not, but one of the things that the lawyers should be aware of is that the District of Columbia does not own the rights of way in the Old City, and that it's federal property and they have an authorization to operate a network of roads. Is that understood by the lawyers? There's only one in the room, I guess. I don't know.
You raise an interesting question.
Yeah.
That is correct factually.
Yes.
But jurisdiction has been transferred by statute for the streets to District of Columbia and typically under law, unless they are doing something illegally, you do not interfere. Point one. Point two, these guidelines cannot address the location of these facilities on federal lands, other than the streets, because there are specific requirements that go into how the federal government has to handle applications on federal land.
Right. And that's great. I understand that. I just want to make sure it's clear. It's not, and it's not really a transfer of jurisdiction. It is an authority to operate a network of roads.
Correct. I think that's correct. Correct.
So if that, if that qualifies as jurisdiction and therefore it's treated as district property, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
That's correct.
Because you don't want to, you know, get caught up in that.
Again.
We've got a motion, a second, right?
Uh-
The EDR is amended?
We-
Is there a motion on the EDR, on the amended EDR?
No.
It's been moved and, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor of the EDR as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Lewis.
Thank you.
See you next month.
I gotta go talk to Catherine.
We have two more items on the agenda. These are information presentations. First one is on proposed temporary improvements along 10th Street Southwest Promenade. We have Ms. Spiegel. As Ms. Spiegel is getting prepared, I'll say that we want to note that the National Park Service, the Southwest Bid, PN Hoffman, Madison Marquette, and ZGF collectively received a 2018 Leadership Award from the National Capital Area Chapter of the APA for the Banneker Overlook of Pedestrian Improvements. Congratulations to all on that. Ms. Spiegel?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. The Southwest Business Improvement District and Michael Ferguson Landscape Architects are here to provide an information presentation on the 10th Street Promenade improvements to seek your comments on the project prior to implementation. The 10th Street Promenade is located in Southwest Federal Center and connects the Mall and Smithsonian Castle to Banneker Park, the Wharf, and Washington Southwest Waterfront. A period of urban renewal transformed this quadrant of the city into what we see today, a tabula rasa ground plane with large mid-century modern buildings. The 10th Street Promenade, or 10th Street Mall, as it was also called, was designed by I.M. Pay and Partners and was built between 1965 and 1969. It stretches nearly a half mile in the north-south direction and is comprised of three separate bridge structures that together form the promenade. The Monumental Core Framework Plan and the National Mall Plan identify 10th Street as an important connection or transition between the National Mall and Southwest Waterfront. The Southwest Eco-District Plan and programmatic design concept for 10th Street and the Banneker Connection identified the need to improve the pedestrian experience along this corridor and established a vision for both near and long-term improvements. Near-term improvements included better wayfinding and pedestrian and bicycle safety and the interim Banneker Connection, which was completed earlier this year. In addition to enhancements to the pedestrian experience, the plans also encouraged temporary programs and uses for the street, such as festivals and other civic events. You may recall Steve Moore, Executive Director of the Southwest Bid, was here in March to share about the recent developments in Southwest that are changing the way people engage and experience this part of the city. He discussed the Wharf and the new International Spy Museum that is expected to open in 2019. The building was designed by Rogers, Stirk, Harper &amp; Partners, with landscape designed by Michael Ferguson Landscape Architects. Located at LaFonte Plaza, the museum will become a midway destination along the 10th Street Promenade. The Southwest Bid has been collaborating with the Spy Museum and other nearby property owners on how to improve the 10th Street pedestrian experience. The Bid has also coordinated with DDOT, who administers the 10th Street right-of-way. And with that brief introduction, I'll now turn the presentation over to Michael Ferguson of Michael Ferguson Landscape Architects, who is here to discuss the 10th Street Promenade improvements.
Thank you, Megan, and good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. My name is Michael Ferguson. I'm here representing both the International Spy Museum founders and JBG Smith, who will fund the implementation of the proposal. I'm going to walk you through in a minute, as well as the Southwest Bid, Steve Moore here behind me. The Southwest Bid will maintain and manage the project after implementation. You're looking here at a photograph that looks north. In 1969, I had the good fortune to, at its opening, to visit this project as part of a field trip in my first year at the School of Architecture at University of Virginia. And the photograph reminds me of how impressed I was of the quality and the character and the breadth of vision of this place, the depth and quality of its details. You see the paved streets, the stepped water channels, the focus on a central promenade. And when I look back at this photograph, it reminds me again of what an extraordinary move this was when it was done at that time. If we jump forward quickly to these times today, it also amazes me when I look at the speed with which the circumstances of this portion of the city have changed in recent years, with the opening of the Wharf, I think an extremely successful waterfront destination, with the recent completion of the Banneker Stairs as a long-awaited connection, and with the anticipation of the opening and- the anticipation of the opening and dedication of the Spy Museum this coming spring. When I think about the proposal that we're looking at here as modest and as temporary as it is, I think it has an outsized capacity when combined with those much more dramatic changes to really begin to move 10th Street towards the important connection between the mall and the waterfront that was envisioned in the framework plan. So we go from there, whoops, I'm doing this to, to, whoop. I'll get this in a second, to turn around and look north from about the same point that we were looking south a second ago. And, you know, we still see the strong north-south connection, the kind of promise of connection to the waterfront. You see also that it hasn't, and I know you know, fared well over the years with the water channels covered with concrete, but you still see the clear, strong pattern of that Pay original design. That simple pattern, strong pattern, belies the complexity of the structure underneath with bridge spans along the majority of its distance from Maryland Avenue all the way to the north side of Bannaker Park. That complexity has influenced what we are proposing to do, but I need to say what we're proposing is fairly focused in its application, and it's focused on the central 39-foot median, the pedestrian median of the street. It is superficial. In effect, it changes none of the flow lines or interrupts any of the infrastructure of the project as it exists today. And it makes every effort to reinforce the strength of the original design while it improves the comfort for pedestrians, enriching the experience of passage, mostly with the addition of plantings, expanding the opportunities for seeding, and providing shade, limited as it is, where we can. And that's focused on the northern promenade, and I'm going to talk about that first, and I'm going to come back then and finish with a quick description of the south promenade. The north promenade involves the reinforcement of the original pattern with the addition of planters that are brought in with integrated seeding that incorporate trees that are manufactured off-site, steel planters with wood seeding brought in from off-site calibrated, custom designed to fit to cover the concrete panels that cover the original water runnels and reinforcing that original design. Each one of those planters, or bays of those planters, are set in what you see as 3-4-3, so that you go through areas of shade and opening, those openings reinforcing existing east-west movements between the buildings. And then a larger gap at Maryland Avenue, you see that in the lower level of the right-hand drawing, where we are restricted because of structural loading of any additions. You see a detail on the left-hand side of how those planters and their bays, that's the four bay, that's 16 planters in the center, might look. Those planters are planted with ginkgo trees, underplanted with evergreen ground covers and seasonal bulbs in a simple plan. They are tailored-fit to cover the concrete covers. You see those there, 24 inches deep. They are applied in the Phase One diagram you see at the right, with a Phase Two diagram delayed depending on more accurate structural calculations for loading, and I'll come back and give you a summary of that at the end. They look, in the end, something like this, in effect. And just beyond the trees in this drawing, there will be a collection of six broad-based umbrellas that are located in the section over Maryland Avenue where the views open east and west and to provide some comfort and shade in that passage. You see the Spy Museum right beside the LaFonte Plaza sign. To the south of that, then, the circumstances are different. There, the water runnels were filled with soil rather than covered with concrete. We are removing the crabgrass that is in those soil panels, replacing the soil with a better horticultural soil, and filling those planters then with a combination of mostly native perennials, grasses, and seasonal bulbs in drifting patterns, cool colors, drought-resistant to adapt to the limited soil depths that we have to deal with in those planters, which are drained, but we are not changing the structure of those, just replacing the soil in them. In a series of cool colors that will provide a broad range of seasonal interest, some of these plants, actually plants that are currently being used or recently installed with the Bannaker Park, so there'll be some of those qualities coming up from the south and into the southern end of the planter, of the promenade, and looking something like this with additional furniture, movable furniture along the way. To finish, I would go back to the issue of phasing. Phase one, you see on the left, and the upper portion of red represent those areas of planter additions north of Maryland Avenue, then a gap, then the southern planters that I just described. Phase two coming in, we believe we're going to get the umbrellas into that phase two, but not the planters until a more in-depth structural analysis. So the final Phase One plan, in the same kind of small diagrams you've been seeing, you see on the right-hand side with the planters north of Maryland being added and the perennials and soils south of Spy Museum. Just a few comments on time. While this is a modest effort, it's not an immodest investment. The hope is that these will certainly be their three years, and we think five years they're capable in terms of their design. Being their 20 years or more, our fervent hope is that they might be a 10-year life while something more permanent and something more complete is done, but serving a good purpose in the interim to improve the passage and encourage people to move from the mall to the Spy Museum and down to the waterfront and begin to affect that connection envisioned in the framework plan. So I thank you for your attention and am happy to take any questions or comments that you have.
Questions for Mr. Ferguson? Yes, Mr. Shaw.
So I want to thank you for your presentation, but one of the things I continue to encourage all of us is to talk about these projects within the context of existing plans. So there's the Eco-District Plan that's here. We have district plans that are here. We just got a great presentation about four months ago about Southwest. And so I don't know how these projects, how this project advances the goals and plans of this district or of the, of NCPC. I'm sure it does, but I encourage you to talk about the project within the context of that. And then for two things I want to bring up, I just read the, some of the comments from Sustainable 2.0 is, I think you mentioned ginkgo as a tree, and one of the things that the Department of Energy and Environment is strongly discouraging is non-native trees. So if there's a way, I'm not sure if the ginkgo is native to DC, but if there's a way to find a native alternative, that'd be helpful. And then another initiative of DOE recently is, we call them pollinator pathways. So if there's a way to advance sort of the Sustainable DC goals around pollination and bees, I would strongly encourage you to sort of look at how this project can be within the context of district plans.
So maybe I'll respond to those in reverse. We'll go back through the planting plan. I think that's a terrific comment on pollinators. A number of those plants are good ones, but we'll reassess them in that context. The ginkgo, I would submit, is an ancient native, which is an absolute truth. It was here 12,000 years ago, got pushed out, and really was rediscovered in China in the 1700s, brought back to the U.S. as part of really the founding of the city about the same time. So I would posture that it is, in fact, a native, but more to the point, it is the one tree that I would have the most confidence in, in surviving the less-than-ideal soil conditions, not in terms of quality. The quality of the soils will be very, very good in those planters, but quantity. Ginkgo can survive the most stress in a soil condition for a tree that can provide the kind of shade that we want. So that's the primary directive in our interest in the choice of that, but I would also suggest that it, in many ways, one can consider that a native, just not a current, in our epoch, native tree. And on the final, the context, I think this fits in quite nicely with a number of the kind of strategic things that are being done around the Southwest Bid, but I know that Steve Moore could articulate, or be more articulate about how this fits in with the broader arena of things that are being done of its nature, strategic kind of additions, temporary additions. So does that make sense, Joe?
No, I mean, no, and Steve and I work together really well. I'm just saying that when you present anything about these ideas, it's important to reference the planning work that's done. So there was references in the Southwest Eco-District about having enhanced plantings along the street, and so just in the language.
Yes.
It's helpful as the commission to hear that the hard work of our staff and community in putting in plans is actually being implemented.
Yeah, no, then I better understand. And honestly, in some of my texts, I included reference to the Eco-District Plan in combination with the framework plan, and it was only in interest of time and brevity that I didn't mention that as part of the original reference to the ability for this to touch past planning.
Mr. Chairman, could I just interject a comment? And I totally agree, and actually, in the beginning slide, there was a reference to the Eco-District. And I think when I look at this, first of all, I think this is a phenomenal plan and design. This seems to be an iterative aspect, which, and I can say, being the founding chairman and the chairman of the Bid, I believe that the staff and the designers have taken into consideration quite a bit all of the studies that are happening. In fact, this is really playing into a much larger piece of how 10th Street in itself, but how Southwest starts to connect within itself and then into the rest of the city. I mean, we can talk about the waterfront redesign, but what are we doing here but making it a pleasant way to connect to that and then to the Smithsonian? And it actually has come up with the Smithsonian Master Plan and the redevelopment and everything that's happening there. And then we can go on and on about the east-west connections, but this is one little informational, so we'll leave it at that. But I totally agree with the fact that this has, the bigger picture has to be taken into consideration. I think that from the Bid's perspective, it absolutely is, and I think this is a very successful treatment in its temporary nature on getting us to those larger plans and implementation of those. Thank you.
And I might add that the Bid has been an integral part of our collective client in developing these designs. It has come to what it is with their participation as well.
Mr. Gal.
Yeah, I just want to thank you, Mr. Ferguson, for your excellent design and presentation. And I want to compliment the development team and the Bid who are supporting this and sort of making a uninhabitable, currently uninhabitable kind of place, something that will be inviting and very, very habitable. I have one little question about Maryland Avenue as it goes under this space. We're not, we're going to put furniture over top at that point, I think I heard you say.
We hoped, yeah.
And I'm wondering, how loud is it? How, is there a lot of noise that floats up from traffic underneath there? Just curious.
Well, there certainly is when a train passes by, but otherwise, I don't know that I've noticed it. Right now, you know, I don't think anybody lingers there, and probably I haven't lingered there a lot either. So to give you a good answer to that, my answer is I'm not sure. I do know that it is a place that allows views out, so it's a good place to pause. We're not encouraging people to get to the edge in this, although certainly we're not preventing them in any way, but the improvements we're making, as I said, are to the median. My sense is that the noise within, the noise might get greater as you get to the edges within the median, probably not enough to disturb you so much that if you want to take a break in that walk, you'll do it.
Well, what's so fascinating to me, every time I go to New York and I'm, you know, on Broadway, and I'm seeing people sitting in tables and chairs as the taxis and the beep, horns are beeping. And so I do think that we can make that kind of linkage to create a more hospitable place by just inviting people to linger there, even if it is noisy for a little bit, and I was just curious how that may have affected your thinking also. Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Ferguson? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep. The last item on our agenda is an information presentation on the Long Bridge Study. Mr. Will is here and Catherine Young Bluth, who is Strategic Transportation Planner with District Department of Transportation. Mr. Wile?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. District Department of Transportation staff are here today to brief you on the Long Bridge NEPA study, which is being led by D-Dot in coordination with the United States Federal Railroad Administration. As context, here's the bridge's location, shown as a dotted white line, spanning across the Potomac River between Arlington, Virginia and East Potomac Park in the District of You will note that Long Bridge is near four other bridges, all of which are situated immediately to the northwest. The nearest bridge, shown in orange, is the Charles Fenwick Metro-Rail Bridge, and then three highway bridges, all shown here in pink, carry Route 1 and I-395 traffic across the river and together form part of the 14th Street Bridges complex. NCPC has reviewed several other bridge-related projects in recent years, including the Francis Case Bridge Lighting Plan in September 2015, the 11th Street Bridge Park in 2017, the Key Bridge Architectural Lighting Plan last December, and most recently, the New South Capital Street Bridge Design in April and July of 2018. Currently, the ongoing NEPA phase of the project is fully funded, with future engineering and construction still yet to be funded. NCPC would review all future Long Bridge project improvements under the National Capital Planning Act, with advisory review over new bridge designs, property transfers, and improvements to district property, as well as federal land improvements in Virginia. And the commission would have approval rights over federal property transfers and improvements inside the district, and this would include National Park Service river-bottom transfers to enable construction of a new bridge across the Potomac River. So with that, I will now turn the presentation over to Kate Young Bluth, who is the Deputy Project Manager for the Long Bridge Project with the District Department of Transportation, and she will now walk you through the remainder of the presentation.
Thank you, Michael. Appreciate being here, everyone. First, I'll take you through the background of the project, a brief background. There's a lot to this project. Then we'll go through the purpose and need, the action alternatives that we're examining now. We'll go through the conceptual designs. You'll see some visuals through a photo simulation, and then we'll go through the head bike crossing, and we'll talk to you about next steps. So the existing Long Bridge is a two-track Steel Trust Railroad Bridge. It was constructed in 1904. It's owned by CSX Transportation, and it serves both freight and passenger rail operations. There's three tracks approaching the bridge to the north and the south, and the bridge itself is only two tracks, so it serves as sort of a bottleneck for the area in an existing condition. It is also a contributing element to the, to the east and west Potomac Parks Historic District. Talk to you a little bit about operations in the area, both the future, the existing condition and the future condition. All of the rail operators listed on this, on the chart on the left, are legally allowed to operate either now or in the future along the corridor. As you can see, Norfolk Southern, a freight operator, doesn't have any trains currently operating in the area, but they are legally allowed to. And Mark has, in their future operations, some, about eight tracks or trains coming through the corridor. The increases you can see in the 2040 trains operation per day are substantial, and the on-time performance would lack in an existing condition, as you can see on the chart on the right. Right now, the commuter. Right now, the commuter and long-distance and intercity regional operations are not 100% on time, but in a future no-bill condition, it would be severely strained in the, in a future condition if the existing rail bridge was to remain. That gets us to our purpose and need. As Michael mentioned, we're in the NEPA or EIS phase, which began in August 2016 and will be completed in 2020. The stated purpose and need, as shown here, provides context for the importance of the Long Bridge Corridor and highlights the long-term capacity needs. So the purpose and need addresses railroad capacity, network connectivity, and then railroad resiliency and redundancy should something happen on the, on the bridge itself or any of the tracks within the project corridor. Just in terms of context of what we've done to date in the public realm, we've had four public meetings to go through what I'm going to show, what we got to today, what I'll show you. And we're going to have a public meeting on November 29th to present our recommended preferred alternative. So here are the two action alternatives that we've gotten to today. Alternative A is the historic two-track Long Bridge would be retained, which is in the gray, just next to the blue lines, which is the expansion to four tracks, a four-track bridge separated, separated bridges. And it would be constructed, the new track, two-track bridge would be constructed upstream of the existing Long Bridge. A new component of the railroad bridge would also be constructed to span over the George-Washington Memorial Parkway and the existing two-track railroad bridge above the George-Washington Memorial Parkway would remain. This, alternative B is on your right. It is that option replaces the historic Long Bridge with the new two-track bridge. So there would be two new two-track bridges over the Potomac River. It's also, the two rail, the two new rail, the two new component railroad bridges would also be constructed to span over the George-Washington Parkway and necessitate the removal of the existing bridge. The new railroad bridges would be designed to meet current design standards, which would raise, slightly raise the profile to support the increased loads while maintaining these existing pier spacing and span links over the river and over the George-Washington These are two common types of railroad structures, railroad bridge structures in the United States, and that's what we moved forward through our current design phase. One is the steel deck plate girder bridge on the left, and the right is the steel-through-plate girder. Both options are feasible under either of the action alternatives, and the structure type itself will be determined at final design. The two structure types maintain and help to maintain an unobstructed view from Virginia to the Potomac River. It's also a good design for the shallow depth over the Potomac River to maintain the vertical clearance over the navigational channel without a substantial increase, increase to the vertical railroad track profile. Okay. Now we'll get into some of the viewshed analysis where you'll see sort of the impact of action alternative A and B. First, you'll be presented with the existing condition, and the existing railroad bridge will be pointed out in yellow here. You can see it on the left, that's the existing railroad bridge. And then if there's another bridge in the way, in the view, that will also be pointed out. So in this condition, this instance, it's the memorial bridge, the, I'm sorry, the Metro-Rail Bridge. So that's the existing condition. Alternative A is shown here. We did a 3D model, which is shown as the one new bridge that shows the massing. It's fairly visible in this condition, alternative. And here's the replacement of the, of the existing bridge over the George-Washington Parkway looking south. This is looking northbound on George-Washington Parkway. The existing bridge is shown again in yellow. This would be the action alternative A, where you can see the new bridge beyond, basically the new pier is shown. And this is action alternative B, where a second new bridge replaces the existing structure there. Moving on to the Mount Vernon Trail or Mount Vernon Memorial Highway area, this is the northbound looking towards the Long Bridge is swing span. This is the action alternative A view. As you can see, you can't really see the new bridge that's north of the existing structure. And this is action alternative B, where the existing swing truss is removed. Here's a view from Mount Vernon Trail looking south. You can see the existing railway bridge labeled just beyond these trees. This is action alternative A, where the new bridge span is clearly visible north of the existing bridge. And here's action alternative B. While not part of the project, FRA, DDOT, and NPS are considering ped bike crossing, crossing options as potential mitigation for impact to properties protected under Section 4F of the United States Transportation Act of 1966. NPS has indicated that the proposed bike pedestrian crossing would be acceptable as a component of Section 4F mitigation. Although, although not part of the project's purpose and need, some agencies and members of the public have expressed strong support for a ped bike crossing. The project has continued to explore the potential for, potential opportunity to accommodate connections that follow the trajectory of the Long Bridge Corridor to the pedestrian-bicycle network. A potential bike pedestrian crossing could be implemented under either action alternative being evaluated, evaluated by the EIS. So as you can see, the two bed, ped bike options are shown in this diagram to the north of the existing railroad structure and the future expansion to the railroad structure in green and black. They are between the Metro-Rail Bridge and the, what would be a new bridge structure. The proposed options are both attached and unattached. Option one shares a railroad bridge substructure, so that would be piers underneath the water. And then option two is a totally independent bridge with its own piers. The differences between the two bridges are listed here. The primary differences really are the piers, whether or not they're, they're, the bridge is attached to the railroad bridge or not. The footprint of that, if it was attached, is much larger and would, would require substantial security measures. We did, we conducted on request, concerns about security of an attached pedestrian-bicycle bridge to the railroad bridge, a security study. And we looked at what security measures and costs would be associated with each attached and unattached for the pedestrian bike bridge. And it was found that an independent ped bike bridge was substantially less expensive, not just because of construction methods, but also because of the security measures you would have to associate with an attached pedestrian bicycle bridge. So the option two, independent bridge, again, single column piers, smaller footprint, and simpler maintenance and operations, fewer of security measures, and construction costs at least 20% less than option one. So next, we're here at next steps. So as we close out 2018, we're evaluating impacts and assessing effects associated with the railroad bridge expansion. And in two, on November 29th, we'll be presenting a preferred action alternative. The recommended one will be identified in a public meeting at the DCRA building from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. If anyone is interested in attending that, you're all welcome. As we get into 2019, we will have a public draft EIS for input and comment. We'll draft a MOA or PA to document the resolution of effects. And then in 2020, we'll be completed, the project will be completed, and we'll have the final EIS and the ROD. Our partner at FRA, Amanda Murphy, is here for any Section 106 or NEPA process questions. And I can, of course, take any questions that you have.
Thank you, Ms. Youngbluth. Questions for Ms. Youngbluth or for FRA?
I have a quick question. You mentioned the bike pedestrian bridge would be more cost-effective if kept separately, right? Is it still worth doing? What's the, what's the goal here?
So we have substantial bridge construction impacts and, on NPS property, and we're examining the ped bike bridge as, as part of mitigation. So we think it is worth pursuing.
Mr. Cash?
Can I ask a question? It's my understanding the Virginia Avenue Tunnel project just wrapped up pretty recently, isn't that right?
I'm not the project manager of that.
So I think, I think that it did, but I just wanted to make the point that I think that that was one of the biggest throughput issues that we had in DC. I mean, every train coming through had to go through a single tunnel through Virginia Avenue. We've expanded that to two. And this, that means now Long Bridge is really kind of the choke point that we have for anything that's coming from the south. So I just want to really put the importance of this project moving forward, being one of the most important economic drivers that we have coming up, because we have Union Station redevelopment that really will, you can't get more trains if you have this, this track that's about to fall apart. And I think that it's, it's, it's really important to emphasize the importance of this moving forward and moving forward quickly, because this really is our transportation constraint going to the south for, for the time being, so.
I'll say the structure itself is in a state of good repair. We've talked to CSX, just to clarify that.
Looking good at 100.
Over 100.
114.
All right.
Mr. May?
Yeah, I'm just curious. I was astounded when you said that the, the parallel independent ped bridge is 20% more expensive. So because the, you know, a lot of the expense in this is, is going to have to be the, the piers, right? So adding another set of piers just for that seems to be very costly. But what are, so what are the, it must, a lot, a lot of it is attributed to the additional security measures. So what are those additional security measures?
Those, the security measures are things like camera, new cameras, substantial caging over the structure itself, some hardening measures. And then we were thinking, sort of operationally, how do you get a security, somebody to, to monitor those cameras or whatever you put in during hours that it is open? Or if it's open all the time, how do you? So.
Well, cameras are relatively cheap, and there are people monitoring train lines all over the place, aren't there?
I can't speak to how an operator does or does not.
There are. And then, and then is the rest of the train line protected similarly?
I can't speak to how CSX currently secures their facilities. I think they have cameras, but I wouldn't feel comfortable.
Yeah, but I'm pretty sure that you can walk up really close to the existing train line when it crosses East Potomac Park, and there are cages to prevent it. So I, I'm just really curious about that, but we'll, we'll pursue that in our discussions with you all and with FRA.
Sure.
But we're, we're strongly supportive, I think, of the, of doing the ped bridge. I think the problem is, you know, who, how's it going to get paid for? But I think that it is, it goes a long way to mitigating the impact, because we can all see what the impacts were. So hopefully, we will find a way that all of this can be accomplished, because it is an important connection and will, it helps with the Capital Trails Plan, because that's a, a missing link or a bad link, if you will, in the Capital Trails Network. And I think we'd like to see it happen. There are impacts associated with even adding the ped bridge, but it, I think that overall, it, I think it can make it a lot more acceptable from our perspective. I appreciate getting the update here and bringing it to the commission. When do you, when do you think we'll see it again?
So the, the next public meeting we have is in near 2020, so we can come back next year, whenever you all would like, when we have more, more work done.
Okay. Thank you.
Other discussion or questions? Thank you, Ms. Youngbluth.
Thank you.
Very much, indeed. So that was the last item on our, on our agenda. I told you we were going to have a light agenda today. So thank you very much. As hefty as this one was, we'll have an even heftier agenda next month, so we will see you, see you in a month. We're adjourned.